It's 5:30 on Monday, March 30th, 2020. Uh, we are having a special Board of Education meeting via Zoom teleconference and livestreamed on, uh, Nashua ETV, um, regarding our, um, COVID-19 and how that is affecting our schools. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Johnson?
Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin? Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
And Mr. Guarino is here. Uh, I, I'm not sure if I have the order exactly correct, but it's the best of my knowledge of our voting order.
Right.
So, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, and thank you all for dialing in tonight. I really appreciate it.
Also, also joining us, we should probably mention, uh, Dr. Mosley.
I have the list. So also joining us is, uh, Ms. Consonella, Mr. Donovan, Ms. O'Gara, Ms. Bagley, Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Hines, Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Alderman Dowd, Mr. Chopah, and Ms. Armenteros. Did I get everyone?
You did.
Okay. All right. So, having done that, uh, we're here to discuss, um, COVID-19 and the effects on the school district. Uh, the first item on the agenda, um, would be the employee pay and compensation. Dr. Mosley or Mr. Donovan?
Sure. Uh, I'll, uh, turn it over to, to Dan Donovan. Uh, we've been working on this for quite some time. So he'll give you an overview of what's taken place over the last couple of weeks and then we can open up for discussion, if that works. Dan?
Okay, um, yeah, we, for the three-week period, March 16th through April 3rd, I believe it is, um, we agreed that we would pay all employees. Um, the first week was sort of a shutdown, so everyone got paid no matter what. No one had to take any personal time. These next two weeks, the, the last week and the week that we just started now, um, we are also paying all employees and we're, we're basically, we're effectively a, a virtual school. So, we expect people to work when they're requested to work. All teachers are working, administrators are working. Um, so, we're paying everyone. We're using Kronos to pay all the, uh, bi-weekly salary people. And we're doing an upload based upon people's typical schedules to pay the, um, hourly folks. So we've, one payroll was done and it worked. There were a few changes we needed to make, about 18 to 20, but we've made those adjustments. And, uh, so that's basically what the plan has been. Now, we're coming to the, uh, time where, since there's an extension of greater than three weeks, so we'll have to decide, uh, going forward, will we continue this? And the effect of April vacation, et cetera. So, that's sort of an update.
Hey, do you have a proposal for going forward?
Well, basically, the, the budget going forward, assuming that we are, um, gonna stay with this virtual, uh, schooling, at least through May 4th, possibly longer, um, I would suggest that we continue the plan we're working on, um, with the caveat that we, we take April vacation and that we, uh, close school on the 19th. If for some reason we're going to work or have school over April vacation, or, um, extend the school year, then we wouldn't have enough money in the budget to pay everyone. But if we continue, uh, according to the plan, the, the existing calendar, then the budget would be able to continue to pay people as we have been in the last couple of weeks.
Right. So, some mention has been made about the idea of, um, foregoing April vacation. Um, would that mean theoretically that we would get out a week early in order to make the budget work?
Yes.
Dr. Mosley?
I, I think there's, I, I put that down as an agenda item. There's some pros and cons to that. Um, you know, certainly, uh, that, that is a possibility. Uh, there's been some online, obviously, discussion around how to proceed with that. Um, certainly, you know, the money's there. It's just a question of how we want to end the school year. I think we, it's fair to say, Dana said, as long as we don't go beyond that, I think the last day of school is the 19th, is that correct?
Yes.
The 19th, then we're within our budget means. So, if we eliminated April break, in theory, we would end, you know, on the 14th, but we would work through that. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes. And I think that that discussion is maybe separate from the discussion of, um, paying our people. Um, so going back to that item, um, regarding pay and compensation, did anyone have any questions, uh, for Mr. Donovan or Dr. Mosley? Uh, Ms. Brown?
So, what happens in the budget if we close down for April vacation and, uh, for the hourly employees like paras and, uh, food service workers and, um, anyone who wouldn't normally be taking pay during that week? They usually have to, they don't usually get paid during that period anyway.
Yeah. So that, that same plan would continue. Those, those people, secretaries, food service, um, paras, they're used to not getting paid. So if we have April vacation, they won't get paid for that week. But that's what they would have expected had this pandemic not come across anyway.
Did I see your hand, Ms. O'Gara, to answer?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
In addition to what Dan just said, um, the powers get their longevity payment on that week purposely, so they have some money.
Right, thank you. And then, I saw a bunch of hands go up. Um, the order I have is Ms. Timmons, Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Zim, and then Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Johnson. Yes? Okay. So, Ms. Timmons?
Want to be clear on something. So, the suggestion is that we, um, last day of school would be June the 19th versus the 12th? Can I have clarification on that?
Yes.
I would suggest that. Go ahead, Jamal.
No, go ahead, Dan. You're fine. You're fine.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that it be the 19th if we take the, um, the April vacation week off that's in the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Did I cut you off?
No, I'm good.
Okay. How about Jessica? You're muted.
Oh, sorry. Is there anyone that needed to go before me?
Well, I, I think I cut you off earlier. I apologize.
Oh, no. It's our, I, um, I, I was just gonna circle back around. I'm thinking, I just want to refocus. These are two separate issues. Right now, are we not focusing on the concept of canceling April vacation? Right now, we're gonna focus on using the current pay model and we'll circle back to April vacation in a moment? Or do you think maybe we should, uh, move to move the April vacations discussion further up in the agenda so that we can get that off the table right now? So we can talk about our pay model?
Yep. Dr. Mosley, are there other, um, issues surrounding April vacation, um, that you had wanted to talk about beyond the pay issue?
I do. I do. I had some thoughts around that.
Okay. Do you, is it your preference to go through them now or to have the pay questions answered first?
You want to just get the pay out of the way that we can talk about the April break and some options? That work?
Okay. I, I'm seeing nodding, so I'm gonna say we have consensus on that. Okay, so going back, I wrote down, uh, Mr. Guarino, you were next.
I apologize. Um, I was just taking something off the screen because there was some dirt on the screen.
Okay.
I didn't really have a question.
All right, Ms. Zim, you are next. Um, I can't un, there it goes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, um, somebody was waving at me. Uh, I, I'm concerned about, I had several calls. I was speaking with you today about it, uh, Heather. Uh, I had calls about the janitors, the custodians, and how, um, they are. And I guess the question I have is, and maybe it's a question for administration, uh, if, if they clean the schools now, will they have to deep clean them again in, in June? They usually do it during the summer, was my understanding. And so, if they're doing it now, will they have to do it again?
Uh, who wants to take it? Mr. Uh, Dr. Mosley, Ms. O'Gara?
No, uh, Dan, you can address that. Dan?
Yep. Yep. Um, uh, been working with Mr. Smith during this time period. Um, the schools are doing a deep clean now, um, and all except for the South High School, which has extenuating circumstances, have, uh, completed their deep clean, except for one other school. I can't recall which one it is. Um, so, but they're, they're moving forward with, um, a summer clean, uh, to do now. Uh, that's the plan. And, um, will they have to do it again? No, they wouldn't have to do it again.
So, so basically, it would equalize for them. They would get time off at the end of this. I, I guess I had, um, the calls I had had, they were.
Hello? Uh, what, what calls are there? Hello?
I had calls. People, people were concerned about it, asking me questions about it. And truthfully, I just couldn't answer them. And so I, I, I thought it was better to clear it up. Uh, so, and he's saying that, I think he's saying that if they work now, I was told that any germs that, that get on any of the, um, areas, uh, they die within two to three days. And so, uh, if you can, if you could let them go now and they could deep clean in the summer, and would it do the same thing? That's what I'm asking. Or is there, and I, and I'm not, I'm just trying to find out. If, if there's a reason to do it now as opposed to then, um, I don't have a problem with it. I would just like to be able to answer the questions that have been placed to me. Some of the people have said to me that they have, you know, they have family members that are elderly that live with them. Some of them have asthma problems. They have breathing problems that they feel they're high risk, if you will. And so they're saying if they could have it off now as opposed to doing it in the summer, when the virus is not predominant, they would prefer that. Is that a problem?
Right. So just to, just to reframe, so I understand your question, Ms. Zim. Are, are you asking about, um, the custodial staff having time off now versus time off in the summer? Because I was under the impression that a lot of them worked year-round. Am I incorrect on that?
They do.
They all work year-round, yes.
So, there's.
So, they are, they're, they're considered, they're considered, they're working just like everybody else is, except they're working in the building.
Right. So, Ms. Zim, there?
We're not giving people time off. There's no free time off. If we don't ask you to do anything and there's nothing to do, I guess you don't have to do anything, which may be the case for a few, some of the employees. But for the most part, we're all working. Teachers are working, administrators are working. They're just working from home, whereas the custodial staff is working at the buildings. But they're the only ones in the building.
Yes. And, and the other thing was, I was told that, that they, they don't usually do the, the food staff area. Is that true? The, does the food staff people do their own cleanup?
Yes, they do. Food staff cleans their kitchens.
So in this case, that it's because they're not there that they're not doing it, right?
Well, I would say we have probably about seven or eight schools where we do have food staff in every day now.
Right. The food staff is doing the breakfast and lunch program with the United Way.
Thank you. I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure that when people call and ask me questions, I, I know what I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to give anybody wrong information. And if it's, so, in all of this, I would obviously look to administration to hear their recommendations. But if, if, I hope I hear you saying that you, that you think they need to finish deep cleaning now?
Go ahead, Dan. Question?
Yes. They're, they're doing the cleaning now. They're doing summer cleaning now. They're doing other things now. Um, like I said, they're, they're just like, everybody's working. We're paying, we're not paying people to sit at home and do nothing. We're paying people to work.
So, all right. So going back to the list, um, Ms. Gilio, you were next. And then, Ms. Johnson, uh, Ms. Bishop, and Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Hi, um, can you hear me okay? Okay. Um, I received an inquiry from a music, an instrumental music teacher who teaches 26 hours a week and has done so for over 30 years, um, who did not get paid this past week, who is more than willing to provide music lessons online to the students he's been teaching all year. Um, I did refer him to contact several of you at Central Office, and I'm not sure if that's been resolved or not. Um, I could not answer his question, which is why I suggested that he contact people at Central Office.
I, I just want to be careful about talking. Uh, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, we, we've discussed this, we've discussed this topic. We just haven't wrapped it up yet, but we're discussing ways to do that.
Okay. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Johnson? And then, we'll circle back to people who have spoken before.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just, I'm just gonna follow up on, um, Ms. Zim's question regarding the compensation of, um, of custodians. I got a messenger message the other day from the, from the custodian and wanted to know why is they still working? Mr. Donovan, you answered that question. We're not paying people for sitting home. But, some of them, have we, did we check with any of them to see if they are at high risk?
That they shouldn't be in the school?
At this point in time?
Uh, if they're at high risk, they have every right to say they're not comfortable coming in because they're at high risk. I think Dana O'Gara can maybe speak to that also, but I don't think we're telling people that if they're at high risk that they absolutely have to come in.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, because I know one of the custodians said to me that there were other people, the custodians work, do work other jobs, and they were, and they were concerned with that. Um, so I can just pass it on to them that if they want to, um, contact Mr. Garrett, they can do that.
Yeah. So, uh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'm gonna ask that we not, um, discuss any particular employee concerns that opt to go to HR, because I don't want to wade into the area of, um, violating, um, their privacy and privacy laws regarding employment. Does, does everyone understand that?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking this right now, because they sent me the question. I'm not, I'm not gonna answer them. I don't, so I don't, I want to make sure they go through the right protocol.
Right. So I think from now on, those types of questions, we'll refer them to Ms. O'Gara.
Okay.
And then she can figure out one-on-one, um, what the answer is for that particular employee. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to get back to the, um, compensation, basically.
So, oh, I would, I would, janitors, uh, custodians. Are they going to clean the schools now?
For the, for the, what they would normally do in May?
That's what I'm hearing. So what are they, what are they gonna be doing after this, once this is all done?
There, there's plenty of things to do in the schools, like painting walls and all kinds of other things that don't, we don't typically have time to do. So there's plenty of things to do.
I think.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I think Mr. Smith's list of deferred maintenance is, is quite lengthy. Uh, Dr. Mosley, I saw you kind of move in your hand a little. Did you have something to say?
Yes. I just want to suggest, this is a very fluid situation. Every individual has different needs, and certainly we're not gonna put any employee at, at, at risk. If there is an issue about safety or anything like that, then we need to have those conversations with the union reps, uh, with, with the leadership team that's already down there with, with Mr. Smith and other union stewards down there. I don't think in discussing, and I agree with you, Ms. Raymond, individual cases of employment compensation in a public meeting like this is cer- appropriate. Uh, we, we asked the union and every, everyone who, for this pay cycle, if we, if we made a mistake, it wasn't intentional. We're just doing this virtually online, so there is gonna be some hiccups on this. But certainly, please, no one at, at this level, like in these, at this meeting, so to speak, can resolve these matters. We certainly will, you know, delve into it. We apologize if we miss, uh, a pay, but certainly when, the intent is to make sure everyone gets paid.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Okay, um, going back to the list, um, wait, what did I write down? Sorry, y'all. Uh, the next person I had down was, um, Ms. Bishop. Do you have a question?
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to explore this, but I know a couple of the other districts are going down to four days a week so that the teachers had one day of planning. Um, just wanted to throw it out there that I was interested in discussing that.
I, I just, one second. Paula, uh, Ms. Johnson, I see you moving around, but you're on mute, so I can't hear you. So.
That's okay. I just had to ask my husband to get something for me.
Oh, okay. All right. So the question is about the new, um, guidelines and recommendations that came out from a number of the educational associations, right? Okay.
So I guess the question is, we just completed, let me just kind of back way up. Um, first of all, I just want to thank the administrative team, um, and the union and all of our teachers for doing a wonderful job launching this, um, remote learning through the governor's initiative. I think it was a prodigious undertaking, and by no means are we saying it's perfect. Um, we had, just to give, give the, the board and the public some background on this, um, part of launching this is to make sure there's a sense of equity. So I want to thank Comcast for making sure that all of our kids have access to the internet. The second piece of this is that we also started disseminating, uh, laptops this past week, and I believe it was Thursday was probably one of the last days that we disseminated laptops. So, with that said, I know there have been, been a variety of districts that who have chosen to launch this, um, remote platform in various ways. Uh, one of them has to do with, I'm very familiar with it, around, uh, four days on and, and one day off for the teachers to plan. I did broach that subject during our, our, uh, city meeting with, um, Attorney Bolton, and he kind of chimed in and said, before you do this and before you change the traditional schedule, um, why don't you get some clarification from the state in terms of if that's okay to do that or not? And he certainly, you know, recommended and would be advised to help us on that, is if, if that, if that's the way the board should go. I just want to just let the board know that we still, we're assessing how the first week went. Um, you know, there's, there, I've read the emails from various parents emailing in and, and teachers as well. We're not saying it's perfect. Um, we're compiling a list of things that worked well and did not work, and things that we can improve on, um, if we can get the go-ahead. And also, um, I haven't talked to the principals about this. I haven't talked to the directors about this. Um, I know the teachers would like to weigh in about this as well. Um, but certainly, I think to get that general feedback, uh, would be helpful. Um, we've just been at this one week and I'd say maybe two days because some of our kids didn't even get laptops until probably Thursday. So, other districts and just, I know other districts, um, have facilitated that. I just want to, I know the superintendents that, um, who, who did that, and they're, they're my colleagues. I have a lot of respect for them. Uh, when we released school for our kids, when we canceled school for those five days, they did have teachers come back into the buildings and do some professional development and kind of work that. We did not opt to do that. Um, even when we had teachers come back to the building, we were very cautious and meticulous because we didn't want, you know, 40 teachers showing up because that's not practicing social spacing as well. So, um, I don't have any issues. I think it's a good idea, as I said to Ms. Raymond in an email, it's just rolling it out and communication and expectations we're still working out, tho- tho- those kinks. So if, I, I'm asking the board to give us some time to just get a sense of where this can be. Um, and if, if teachers, administrators want to work and we get the okay and confirmation from the state that we will have the requirements to fill the school year, I think, you know, it's, it's okay with me. I don't, I think it's a good idea.
Oh. So can you come back to us once you get that feedback? Um, and let us know if that is something that is practical for our district, um, and how that would affect our pay situation? Um, because I think many of us are concerned with making sure that, um, our teachers and our staff, um, are, and our students get the support that they need, have the appropriate amount of work that they need, and get the appropriate compensation for the work that they're doing. Um, so does that answer your question, Ms. Bishop? I see you, Ms. Zim. I'm, I'm coming back.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we were, we had that on our radar as an option.
Yeah. And again, if we get back to, the teachers are, are gonna be doing the professional development on that fifth day. It's just, what are the hourly employees going to be doing? And I think that's, that's what we're looking to explore. And for a district our size, those are a lot of employees, and I think we could do it, though. I mean, I just think we want to, I just, before instituting it or making the recommendation, I haven't done the homework on it, that, that I should.
Okay. So, um, getting back to the list, I have Mr. Guarino, and then back to Ms. Zim.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to.
Oh, and then Ms. Johnson again as well.
Okay. I just wanted to, um, not to, uh, belabor on any subject, but I just wanted to make a comment about the deep cleaning and what the custodians are doing right now in our schools. I think it is a good idea to have them do the deep cleaning now because some of the principals and some teachers have had to go back in the building and, uh, because they were giving out, uh, the laptops. And some, you know, some principals are, are still in the building. So we need to make sure for the safety of everyone that, that they do deep cleaning now. And I think that's a good idea. Um, also, you know, the custodians are also helping with the, uh, food service people are there, and they don't just always stay in the kitchen. So, uh, the custodians and the food service people are working together. They have, the, the custodians have to help them with the cardboard. There's a lot of things that custodians are still doing in, in the building, besides deep cleaning. You know, they have to maintain the buildings. There's a lot of different things, like the elevator at Dr. Crisp. You know, they have to kind of maintain that. And they, they're helping the, uh, teachers with the, um, uh, the, uh, Chromebook carts. They have like these carts and stuff. So, so, um, I just wanted to assure some people, and I don't want to belabor this subject, but there is stuff there that the custodians are, are doing and other people are doing in the building. So I think it is a good idea that they, they do the deep clean now and, uh, keep everybody safe.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. And, um, thank you. I know you've been at Dr. Crisp this week, um, handing out the lunches with some of our employees. So, thank you for that.
Yeah. So I, I can see what they're doing. They're working together, and there's a lot of things that they, you know, that the food service people have a bunch of cardboard that's stacked up, and the custodians have to go back. That's one of the things. They have to go back and make sure the area is clean. When they, they bring in the milk and they have to do the milk, uh, uh, order to make sure the milk is rotated and things like that. So there's a lot of things that they are doing there. So.
Okay. So getting back on track with the question of, um, the compensation for our employees, um, the next person I have is Ms. Zim. Um, and then I have Ms. Johnson, and then I think, uh, Ms. Odin, did you have your hand as well? No, she's shaking. No. Okay. So, Ms. Jo, I'm sorry, Ms. Zim, then Ms. Johnson, and then.
No need to talk about anymore about the compensation. I'm okay with that.
Okay. So, Ms. Zim?
I'm, I'm very concerned that we are jumping, uh, when you, my understanding, I'm not a parliamentarian, uh, authority by any stretch, so please don't, I, I don't mean any disrespect. But we need, as a team, we need to focus on one issue at a time. When you jump all over the place, and my understanding of all, of parliamentary procedure is that when point of order is called, that's a stop talking and find out if there is a violation of protocol. And so then it's supposed to be heard and, and, and either, either acted on or discarded as foolishness. And so, if we don't do that, we will be all over the, the road here. We've got, we've already had three, we've had three issues on the floor right now, and not one of them has actually been resolved. So I would request that we all try to focus on, and I know it's hard. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be.
No, thank you, Ms. Zim. I did not hear you, uh, chime in with point of order, so I apologize for that.
With, it's hard because this whole process is, uh, It's hard because this whole process is, we're trying to to learn the process and and focus on on content at the same time, and that's very difficult. And another topic is difficult. I did have one question that I would like to know. When people call, I like Mrs. Gigliano, I'm mispronouncing.
Gilio?
Thank you so much. I had a call, a similar call, but not the same call. I'm wondering when people call and their if their salaries weren't correct or if they have questions, if there's a phone number, because when you call the district office, nobody is there, right? So is there a phone number that kind of these people go through to get to the right person?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Garra.
So they can leave a message with payroll or HR, whether we're there or I'm at home right now. All my voicemail messages come in through my email, and I can respond to them. So we're responding to people from home all the time.
I actually told this individual, I think if you leave your message, they will get back to you there, but not everybody is aware. So it's good for this to be on the meeting tonight so that some of those people I'm sure are listening, and they will now know that there is a process, or they probably should have known it and do know it anyway. But a reminder, I think everybody, there's a lot of anxiety. And so I think we reiterate some of our processes. It certainly cannot hurt. And so thank you for that information.
Dr. Mosley.
Just, I'm going to direct the question to Dana. So Dana, just for the public, what is the number that people can call if they have a payroll question?
Oh, Dan, do you have the payroll number? I have my, so the numbers in HR, they can call 966-1061, 1059, 1075. Those are all the HR department. My number is 1,009. It's going to go right in my into my email box, and I can hear your message, and anybody can hear it. There's also an email address I think Dan's been telling everybody to use. It's payroll@nashua.edu with any questions that you have about payroll.
So just.
That's good.
Just for the public, the number is 1603-966-1009, and that takes you right to Dana. You can also go on the website and our website, if you have any questions about payroll, any concerns, you can go to payroll, P-A-Y-R-O-L-L, at nashua.edu, and all your payroll questions will be answered within 24 hours. Someone will get back to you. If you still haven't payroll questions, you can still call my office at 603-966-1003, and I'll get the message as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. And thank you, Ms. O'Gara. Okay, so, yes, Ms. Odin.
I don't know if it's too early to make a motion, but I have a motion to make on the pay.
I think now would be a wonderful time for that.
Okay. I move that we continue paying all employees for every week until November 4th that our students are in the process of remote learning.
Just to clarify, you said November 4th. What did you mean?
Sorry, May 4th.
Okay, so the motion is to continue to pay, let me just write it down properly, to pay all employees. Sorry, say it again, Ms. Odin.
I I move that we continue to pay all employees until May 4th for all weeks when students are in the remote learning situation.
All right, is there a second? I see, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Brown.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Brown. Did anyone have any other comments? Ms. Brown and then Ms. O'Gara, or Ms. O'Gara and then Ms. Brown and then Mr. Guarino.
Oh, I see. I see it.
So I want to clarify that is this meaning we're going to pay people on their regular as if they're working, so their regular scheduled paydays? So I just want to clarify, paras and food service workers who do not traditionally get paid during April vacation will still, as they normally wouldn't, will not get paid. We're not paying them for an extra week under the intent of this motion.
That's a good question.
That's why I added when students are in the remote learning situation.
Ms. O'Gara, do you think that that covers it? Or Mr. Donovan? I can't hear you.
I would change, I would change the motion not until May 4th because that covers the week. Why don't you cut it off right before April vacation? So that would be April, what is it, 27th? If you put it there, I think that makes more sense. We'll pay everyone until then, and then we can worry about vacation week and 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 pass that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I think that's a a good addition to the motion or change to the motion.
So the date is actually Friday, the 24th would be the last day. Does that work?
That's great.
Okay, so, Ms. Brown.
So I'd like to modify the motion to change the date to, what is it?
April 24th.
April 24th, please.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Odin. All right, Ms. O'Gara, you have your hand.
So we're paying people who are regularly working for us. Not all our employees are substitutes and other, we have some other employees as well. So we're paying people who regularly have a regular schedule with us.
So it would be helpful if the motion read all employees, their regular work schedule, would that cover it? Or do you need it to say something more specific than that?
Mr. Donovan, what do you think?
I see you, Ms. Dean. You're next.
Sorry.
I would, I would suggest the same people for the memo. That's a long list of people for a motion, though. Yeah, regularly scheduled workers, people with regular schedules. That's who we're paying now. So I think the intent is to continue to pay those people.
Did anyone want to make that amendment? Or should we just withdraw it and read you the whole thing?
That might be wise. I'll withdraw my motion.
Ms. Brown, will you withdraw your second?
I do. I withdraw my second.
Okay, so Ms. Dean, I'm going to let Ms. Odin restate her motion, and then I'll come to you. Okay.
Could could you reread the motion as you have written it down?
So what I have after everyone gave their advice is to continue to pay all regularly scheduled workers until April 24th.
Okay, thank you. That does the trick.
So are you going to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Brown, are you still comfortable with making a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and then Ms. Dean, did you have a comment regarding this motion?
Well, I I have two comments. One, why are we changing it to April 24th?
It's 5:30 on Monday, March 30th, 2020. We are having a special Board of Education meeting via Zoom teleconference and live streamed on Nashua ETV regarding our COVID-19 and how that is affecting our schools. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin? Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Yeah.
And Mr. Guarino is here. I I'm not sure if I have the order exactly correct, but that's my knowledge of our voting order. So we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, and thank you all for dialing in tonight. I really appreciate it.
Also, also joining us, we should probably mention Dr. Mosley.
I have the list. So also joining us is Ms. Consanella, Mr. Donovan, Ms. O'Gara, Ms. Bagley, Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Hines, Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Alderman Dowd, Mr. Chopra, and Ms. Armenteros. Did I get everyone?
You did.
Okay. All right, so having done that, we're here to discuss COVID-19 and the effects on the school district. The first item on the agenda would be the employee pay and compensation. Dr. Mosley or Mr. Donovan?
Sure. I'll turn it over to to Dan Donovan. We've been working on this for quite some time, so he'll give you an overview of what's taken place over the last couple of weeks, and then we can open up for discussion, if that works. Dan?
Okay, yeah, we, for the three-week period, March 16th through April 3rd, I believe it is, we agreed that we would pay all employees. The first week was sort of a shutdown, so everyone got paid no matter what. No one had to take any personal time. These next two weeks, the the last week and the week that we just started now, we are also paying all employees, and we're we're basically, we're effectively a a virtual school. So we expect people to work when they're requested to work. All teachers are working, administrators are working. So we're paying everyone. We're using Cronos to pay all the biweekly salary people. And we're doing an upload based upon people's typical schedules to pay the hourly folks. So we've, one payroll is done, and it worked. There were a few changes we needed to make, about 18 to 20, but we've made those adjustments. And so that's basically what the plan has been. Now we're coming to the time where, since there's an extension of greater than three weeks, so I'll have to decide going forward, will we continue this? And the effect of April vacation, et cetera. So that's sort of an update.
Hey, do you have a proposal for going forward?
Well, basically, the the budget going forward, assuming that we are going to stay with this virtual schooling, at least through May 4th, possibly longer, I would suggest that we continue the plan we're working on with the caveat that we we take April vacation and that we close school on the 19th. If for some reason we're going to work or have school over April vacation or extend the school year, then we wouldn't have enough money in the budget to pay everyone. But if we continue according to the plan, the existing calendar, then the budget would be able to continue to pay people as we have been in the last couple of weeks.
Right, so some mention has been made about the idea of foregoing April vacation. Would that mean theoretically that we would get out a week early in order to make the budget work?
I think.
Dr. Mosley?
I I think there's, I I put that down on the agenda item. There's some pros and cons to that. You know, certainly, that that is a possibility. There's been some online, obviously, discussion around how to proceed with that. Certainly, you know, the money is there. It's just a question of how we want to end the school year. I think we, it's fair to say, Dana, is that as long as we don't go beyond that, I think the last day of school is the 19th, is that correct?
Yes.
The 19th, then we're within our budget means. So if we eliminated April break, in theory, we would end, you know, on the 14th, but we would work through that. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes, and I think that that discussion is maybe separate from the discussion of paying our people. So going back to that item regarding pay and compensation, did anyone have any questions for Mr. Donovan or Dr. Mosley? Ms. Brown?
So what happens in the budget if we close down for April vacation? And for the hourly employees like paras and food service workers and anyone who wouldn't normally be taking pay during that week? They usually have to, they don't usually get paid during that period anyway.
Yes, so that that same plan would continue. Those those people, secretaries, food service, paras, they're used to not getting paid. So if we have April vacation, they won't get paid for that week. But that's what they would have expected had this pandemic not come across anyway.
Did I see your hand, Ms. O'Gara, to answer?
Yes. In addition to what Dan just said, the powers get their longevity payment on that week purposely, so they have some money.
All right, thank you. And then I saw a bunch of hands go up. The order I have is Ms. Timmons, Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Dean, and then Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Johnson. Yes, okay. So Ms. Timmons.
Want to be clear on something. So the suggestion is that we, last day of school would be June 19th versus the 12th. Can I have clarification on that?
Yes. I would suggest that. Go ahead, Gemma.
No, go ahead, Dan. You're fine. You're fine.
Yeah, I I would suggest that it be the 19th if we take the the April vacation week off that's in the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Did I cut you off?
No, I'm good.
Okay, how about Jessica? You're muted.
Oh, sorry. Is there anyone that needs to go before me?
Well, I I think I cut you off earlier. I apologize.
Oh, no, it's our, I, I was just going to circle back around. I'm thinking, I just want to refocus. These are two separate issues. Right now, are we not focusing on the concept of canceling April vacation? Right now, we're going to focus on using the current pay model, and we'll circle back to April vacation in a moment. Or do you think maybe we should move to move the April vacations discussion further up in the agenda so that we can get that off the table right now, so we can talk about our pay model?
Yep. Dr. Mosley, are there other issues surrounding April vacation that you had wanted to talk about beyond the pay issue?
I do. I do. I had some thoughts around that.
Okay, do you, is it your preference to go through them now or to have the pay questions answered first?
You want to just get the pay out of the way that we can talk about the April break and some options that work?
Okay, I I'm seeing nodding, so I'm going to say we have consensus on that. Okay, so going back, I wrote down, Mr. Guarino, you were next.
I apologize. I was just taking something off the screen because there was some dirt on the screen.
Okay, so. All right, Ms. Dean, you are next. I can't un, there it goes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm, somebody was waving at me. I I'm concerned about, I had several calls, I was speaking with you today about it. Heather, I had calls about the janitors, the custodians, and how they are. And I guess the question I have is, and maybe it's a question for administration, if if they clean the schools now, will they have to deep clean them again in in June? They usually do it during the summer, was my understanding. And so if they're doing it now, will they have to do it again?
Who wants to take it? Mr. Dr. Mosley, Ms. O'Gara?
No, Dan, you can address that. Dan?
Yep, yep. Well, I've been working with Mr. Smith during this time period. The schools are doing a deep clean. The schools are doing a deep clean now. And all except for the South High School, which has extenuating circumstances, have completed their deep clean, except for one other school. I can't recall which one it is. So, but they're moving forward with a summer clean to do now. That's the plan. And will they have to do it again? No, they wouldn't have to do it again.
So basically, it would equalize for them. They would get time off at the end of this. I guess I had. The calls I had had.
What calls are there? Hello?
I had calls. People were concerned about it, asking me questions about it. And truthfully, I just couldn't answer them. And so I thought it was better to clear it up. So, and he's saying that, I think he's saying that if they work now, I was told that any germs that get on any of the areas, they die within two to three days. And so if you could let them go now and they could deep clean in the summer, and would it do the same thing? That's what I'm asking. Or is there, and I'm not, I'm just trying to find out. If there's a reason to do it now as opposed to then, I don't have a problem with it. I would just like to be able to answer the questions that have been placed to me. Some of the people have said to me that they have, you know, they have family members that are elderly that live with them. Some of them have asthma problems. They have breathing problems. They feel they're high risk, if you will. And so they're saying if they could have it off now as opposed to doing it in the summer, when the virus is not predominant, they would prefer that.
So, right, so just to reframe, so I understand your question, Ms. Zim. Are you asking about the custodial staff having time off now versus time off in the summer? Because I was under the impression that a lot of them worked year-round. Am I incorrect on that?
They do.
They all work year-round, yes.
So there's.
So they are, they're, they're concerned. They're concerned, they're working just like everybody else is, except they're working in the building.
Right. So Ms. Zim, there.
We're not giving people time off. There's no free time off. If we don't ask you to do anything and there's nothing to do, I guess you don't have to do anything, which may be the case for a few, some of the employees. But for the most part, we're all working. Teachers are working, administrators are working. They're just working from home. Whereas the custodial staff is working at the buildings, but they're the only ones in the building.
Yes, and the other thing was, I was told that they don't usually do the food staff area. Is that true? Does the food staff people do their own cleanup?
Yes, they do. Food staff cleans their kitchens.
So in this case, it's because they're not there that they're not doing it, right?
Well, I would say we have probably about seven or eight schools where we do have food staff in every day now.
Right, the food staff is doing the breakfast and lunch program with the United Way.
Thank you. I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure that when people call and ask me questions, I know what I'm, I don't want to give anybody wrong information. And if it's, so in all of this, I would obviously look to administration to hear their recommendations. But if I hear you saying that you think they need to finish deep cleaning now?
Go ahead, Dan. Question?
Yes, they're doing the cleaning now. They're doing summer cleaning now. They're doing other things now. Like I said, they're just like, everybody's working. We're paying, we're not paying people to sit at home and do nothing. We're paying people to work.
So, all right, so going back to the list, Ms. Gilio, you were next, and then Ms. Johnson, Ms. Bishop, and Mr. Garino.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I received an inquiry from an instrumental music teacher who teaches 26 hours a week and has done so for over 30 years, who did not get paid this past week, who is more than willing to provide music lessons online to the students he's been teaching all year. I did refer him to contact several of you at Central Office, and I'm not sure if that's been resolved or not. I could not answer his question, which is why I suggested that he contact people at Central Office.
I just want to be careful about talking. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, we've discussed this, we've discussed this topic. We just haven't wrapped it up yet. But we're discussing ways to do that.
Okay, I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, and then we'll circle back to people who have spoken before.
Hi. I'm just going to follow up on Mrs. Zim's question regarding the compensation of custodians. I got a messenger message the other day from the custodian and wanted to know why is they still working, Mr. Donovan? You answered that question. We're not paying people for sitting home. But some of them, we check with any of them to see if they are at high risk, that they shouldn't be in the school at this point in time?
If they're at high risk, they have every right to say they're not comfortable coming in because they're at high risk. I think Dana O'Gara can maybe speak to that also, but I don't think we're telling people that if they're at high risk that they absolutely have to come in.
Okay, because I know one of the custodians said to me that there were other people, so custodians work, do work other jobs, and they were concerned with that. So I can just pass it on to them that if they want to contact Mrs. O'Gara, they can do that.
Yeah, so, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'm going to ask that we not discuss any particular employee concerns that opt to go to HR, because I don't want to wade into the area of violating their privacy and privacy laws regarding employment. Does everyone understand that?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking this right now, because they sent me the question. I'm not going to answer them. I don't, I want to make sure they go through the right protocol.
Right, so I think from now on, those types of questions, we'll refer them to Ms. O'Gara. And then she can figure out one-on-one what the answer is for that particular employee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to get back to the compensation, basically. So, I want to, janitors, custodians. Are they going to clean the schools now? For the, what they would normally do in May? That's what I'm hearing. So what are they going to be doing after this, once this is all done?
There's plenty of things to do in the schools, like painting walls and all kinds of other things that we don't typically have time to do. So there's plenty of things to do.
I think.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I think Mr. Smith's list of deferred maintenance is quite lengthy. Dr. Mosley, I saw you kind of move in your hand a little. Did you have something to say?
Yes, I just want to suggest, this is a very fluid situation. Every individual has different needs. And certainly, we're not going to put any employee at risk. If there is an issue about safety or anything like that, then we need to have those conversations with the union reps, with the leadership team that's already down there with Mr. Smith and other union stewards down there. I don't think, discussing, and I agree with you, Ms. Raymond, individual cases of employment compensation in a public meeting like this is appropriate. We asked the union and everyone for this pay cycle, if we made a mistake, it wasn't intentional. We're just doing this virtually online, so there is going to be some hiccups on this. But certainly, please, no one at this level, like in these, at this meeting, so to speak, can resolve these matters. We certainly will delve into it. We apologize if we miss a pay, but certainly the intent is to make sure everyone gets paid.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Okay, going back to the list. Wait, where did I write it down? Sorry, y'all. The next person I had down was Ms. Bishop. Do you have a question?
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to explore this, but I know a couple of the other districts are going down to four days a week so that the teachers had one day of planning. Just wanted to throw it out there that I was interested in discussing that.
I just, one second. Paula, Ms. Johnson, I see you moving around, but you're on mute, so I can't hear you.
That's okay. I just had to ask my husband to get something for me.
Oh, okay. All right, so the question is about the new guidelines and recommendations that came out from a number of the educational associations, right? Okay.
So I guess the question is, we just completed, let me just kind of back way up. First of all, I just want to thank the administrative team and the union and all of our teachers for doing a wonderful job launching this remote learning through the Governor's Initiative. I think it was a prodigious undertaking, and by no means are we saying it's perfect. We had, just to give the board and the public some background on this, part of launching this is to make sure there's a sense of equity. So I want to thank Comcast for making sure that all of our kids have access to the internet. The second piece of this is that we also started disseminating laptops this past week. And I believe it was Thursday was probably one of the last days that we disseminated laptops. So with that said, I know there have been a variety of districts that who have chosen to launch this remote platform in various ways. One of them has to do with, I'm very familiar with it, around four days on and one day off for the teachers to plan. I did broach that subject during our city meeting with Attorney Bolton, and he kind of chimed in and said, before you do this and before you change the traditional schedule, why don't you get some clarification from the state in terms of if that's okay to do that or not? And he certainly, you know, recommended and would be advised to help us on that, if that's the way the board should go. I just want to just let the board know that we still, we're assessing how the first week went. You know, there's, I've read the emails from various parents emailing in and teachers as well. We're not saying it's perfect. We're compiling a list of things that worked well and did not work, and things that we can improve on. If we can get the go-ahead, and also, I haven't talked to the principals about this. I haven't talked to the directors about this. I know the teachers would like to weigh in about this as well, but certainly, I think to get that general feedback would be helpful. We've just been at this one week, and I'd say maybe two days, because some of our kids didn't even get laptops until probably Thursday. So other districts, and just, I know other districts have facilitated that. I just want to, I know the superintendents that, who did that, and they're my colleagues. I have a lot of respect for them. When we released school for our kids, when we canceled school for those five days, they did have teachers come back into the buildings and do some professional development and kind of work that. We did not opt to do that. Even when we had teachers come back to the building, we were very cautious and meticulous because we didn't want, you know, 40 teachers showing up because that's not practicing social spacing as well. So I don't have any issues. I think it's a good idea, as I said to Ms. Raymond in an email. It's just rolling it out and communication and expectations, we're still working out those kinks. So if, I'm asking the board to give us some time to just get a sense of where this can be. And if teachers, administrators want to work and we get the okay and confirmation from the state that we will have the requirements to fill the school year, I think, you know, it's okay with me. I think it's a good idea.
Oh, so can you come back to us once you get that feedback? And let us know if that is something that is practical for our district? And how that would affect our pay situation? Because I think many of us are concerned with making sure that our teachers and our staff, and our students get the support that they need, have the appropriate amount of work that they need, and get the appropriate compensation for the work that they're doing. So does that answer your question, Ms. Bishop? I see you, Ms. Zim. I'm coming back.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we had that on our radar as an option.
Yeah. And again, if we get back to, the teachers are going to be doing the professional development on that fifth day. It's just what are the hourly employees going to be doing? And I think that's what we're looking to explore. And for a district our size, those are a lot of employees, and I think we can do it, though. I mean, I just think we want to, I just, before instituting it or making the recommendation, I haven't done the homework on it that I should.
So getting back to the list, I have Mr. Garino, and then back to Ms. Zim.
Thank you. I just wanted to.
And then Ms. Johnson again as well.
Okay. I just wanted to, not to belabor on any subject, but I just wanted to make a comment about the deep cleaning and what the custodians are doing right now in our schools. I think it is a good idea to have them do the deep cleaning now because some of the principals and some teachers have had to go back in the building and, because they were giving out the laptops. And some, you know, some principals are still in the building. So we need to make sure for the safety of everyone that they do deep cleaning now, and I think that's a good idea. Also, you know, the custodians are also helping with the food service. People are there, and they don't just always stay in the kitchen. So the custodians and the food service people are working together. They have, the custodians have to help them with the cardboard. There's a lot of things that custodians are still doing in the building. Besides deep cleaning, you know, they have to maintain the buildings. There's a lot of different things, like the elevator at Dr. Crisp. You know, they have to kind of maintain that, and they're helping the teachers with the Chromebook carts. They have like these carts and stuff. So I just wanted to assure some people, and I don't want to belabor this subject, but there is stuff there that the custodians are doing and other people are doing in the building. So I think it is a good idea that they do the deep clean now and keep everybody safe.
Thank you, Mr. Garino, and thank you. I know you've been at Dr. Crisp this week handing out the lunches with some of our employees, so thank you for that.
Yeah, so I can see what they're doing. They're working together, and there's a lot of things that they, you know, that the food service people have a bunch of cardboard that's stacked up, and the custodians have to go back. That's one of the things. They have to go back and make sure the area is clean when they bring in the milk, and they have to do the milk order to make sure the milk is rotated and things like that. There's a lot of things that they are doing there, so.
Okay, so getting back on track with the question of the compensation for our employees. The next person I have is Ms. Zim, and then I have Ms. Johnson, and then I think Ms. Odin, did you have your hand as well? No, she's shaking. No. Okay, so Ms. John, I'm sorry, Ms. Zim, then Ms. Johnson, and then.
Don't need to talk about anymore about the compensation. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so Ms. Zim?
I'm very concerned that we are jumping, when you, my understanding, I'm not a parliamentarian authority by any stretch, so please don't, I don't mean any disrespect. But we need, as a team, we need to focus on one issue at a time. When you jump all over the place, and my understanding of parliamentary procedure is that when point of order is called, that's a stop talking and find out if there is a violation of protocol. And so then it's supposed to be heard and either acted on or discarded as foolishness. And so if we don't do that, we will be all over the road here. We've already had three, we've had three issues on the floor right now, and not one of them has actually been resolved. So I would request that we all try to focus on, and I know it's hard. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be.
No, thank you, Ms. Zim. I did not hear you chime in with point of order, so I apologize for that.
It's hard because this whole process is, we're trying to learn the process and focus on content at the same time, and that's very difficult. And another topic is difficult. I did have one question that I would like to know. When people call, like Mrs. Gigliano, I'm mispronouncing.
Gilio?
Thank you so much. I had a call, a similar call, but not the same call. I'm wondering when people call and if their salaries weren't correct, or if they have questions, if there's a phone number. Because when you call the district office, nobody is there, right? So is there a phone number that kind of these people go through to get to the right person?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. O'Gara.
So they can leave a message with payroll or HR, whether we're there or I'm at home right now. All my voicemail messages come in through my email, and I can respond to them. So we're responding to people from home all the time, all they have to do is message.
I actually told this individual, I think if you leave your message, they will get back to you there, but not everybody is aware. So it's good for this to be on the meeting tonight so that some of those people I'm sure are listening and they will now know that there is a process, or they probably should have known it and do know it anyway, but a reminder. I think everybody, there's a lot of anxiety, and so I think we reiterate some of our processes. It certainly cannot hurt. And so thank you for that information.
Dr. Mosley?
Just, I'm going to direct the, the question to Dana. So Dana, just for the public, what is the number that people can call if they have a payroll question?
Oh, Dan, do you have the payroll number? I have my, so the numbers in HR, they can call nine six six, one oh six one, one oh five nine, one oh seven five. Those are all the HR department. My number is one thousand nine. It's going to go right in my, into my email box and I can hear your message and anybody can hear it. There's also an email address I think Dan's been telling everybody to use. It's payroll@nashua.edu with any questions that you have about payroll.
So just-
That's good.
Ju- just for the public, the number is one six oh three nine six six one zero zero nine, and that takes you right to Dana. You can also go on the website and our website, if you have any questions about payroll, any concerns, you can go to payroll, P A Y R O L L at nashua.edu and all your payroll questions will be answered within twenty-four hours. Someone will get back to you. If you still haven't payroll questions, you can still call my office at six oh three nine six six one zero zero three, and I'll get the message as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and thank you, Ms. O'Gara. Okay, so, yes, Ms. Odin.
I don't know if it's too early to make a motion, but I have a motion to make on the pay.
I think now would be a wonderful time for that.
Okay. I move that we continue paying all employees but every week until November fourth that our students are in the process of remote learning.
Just to clarify, you said November fourth. What did you mean?
I'm sorry, May fourth.
Okay, so the motion is to continue to pay, let me just write it down properly, to pay all employees. Sorry, say it again, Ms. Odin.
I, I move that we continue to pay all employees until May fourth for all weeks when students are in the remote learning situation.
Okay. All right, is there a second? I, I, I see, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Brown.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Brown. Did anyone have any other comments? Ms. Brown and then Ms. O'Gara, or Ms. O'Gara and then Ms. Brown and then Mr. Guarino.
Oh, I see, I see it.
So I want to clarify that, is this meaning we're going to pay people on their regular, as if they're working, so their regular scheduled paydays? So I just want to clarify, paras and food service workers who do not traditionally get paid during April vacation will still, as they normally wouldn't, will not get paid. We're not paying them for an extra week under the intent of this motion.
That's a good question.
That's why I added when students are in the remote learning situation.
Ms. O'Gara, do you think that that covers it, or Mr. Donovan? I can't hear you.
I would, I would change, I would change the motion not until May fourth because that covers the week. Why don't you cut it off right before April vacation? So that would be April, what is it, twenty-seventh? If you put it there, I think that makes more sense. We'll pay everyone until then, and then we can worry about vacation week and, and, and pass that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I think that's a, a, a good addition to the motion or change to the motion.
So the date is actually Friday, the twenty-fourth would be the last day. Does that work?
That's a great.
Okay, so, Ms. Brown.
So I'd like to modify the motion to change the date to, what is it?
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth, please.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Do, Ms. Odin. All right, Ms. O'Gara, you have your hand.
So we're paying people who are regularly working for us, not all our employees. Have substitutes and other, we have some other employees as well. So we're paying people who regularly have a regu- regular schedule with us.
So it would be helpful if the motion read all employees, their regular work schedule, would that cover it? Or do you need it to say something more specific than that?
Mr. Donovan, what do you think?
I see you, Ms. Dean. You're next.
Sorry.
I would, I would suggest the same people, or the memo, that's a long list of people for a motion, though. Yeah, regularly scheduled workers, people with regular schedules. That's who we're paying now, so I think the intent is to continue to pay those people.
Did anyone want to make that amendment? Or should we just withdraw it and read you the whole thing?
That might be wise. I'll withdraw my motion.
Ms. Brown, will you withdraw your second?
I do. I withdraw my second.
Okay, so Ms. Dean, I'm going to let Ms. Odin restate her motion and then I'll come to you. Okay.
Could, could you reread the motion as you have written it down?
So what I have after everyone gave their advice is to continue to pay all regularly scheduled workers until April twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Is that?
That, that, that does the trick.
Okay. So are you going to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Brown, are you still comfortable with making a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and then Ms. Dean, did you have a comment regarding this motion?
Uh, well, I, I have two comments. Uh, one, why are we changing it to April twenty-fourth? It's probably obvious, but I, it, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the difference is. I thought May fourth was, we have to stay in school till then. And then I have a question. I'd like to know, I know that, does it include monitors and crossguards? The same as it was before, basically the same group of people, so they're included? And, and third, I had a comment to make to Mr., to Mr., I'm terrible with names, I'm so sorry, Ray. He was talking about the custodians and I would like to make sure that what I was told by the custodians is correct. That, because he mentioned that the teachers are going back in and, and he wanted to be cleaned. But my understanding was that after three days, all of those germs were dead and that that came from the professionals who, who do the, you know, this, this came from, from the authorities on cleaning, if you will. So is that a truth or do we know? I mean, I was told clearly that, that two to three days was the absolute max that the germ would survive. So those, there shouldn't be anything alive unless somebody's gone in there since it was cleaned and has the germ, right? Does that make any sense?
I think so. So you have a couple of questions for Mr. Donovan regarding the end date and if it covers everybody who's being paid now. And then your second question is regarding how long germs survive, and I don't-
Want to be sure that, that, because to me, that was why, when I initially wanted it to be done immediately, it was because I didn't realize that they automatically die within three days. If that's the case, it doesn't matter when they clean it, as, as long as there are no germs there that are going to make our staff sick. I mean, we don't want anybody to get sick if we can help it.
Okay, Mr. Donovan, regarding the date, the way that we have it worded now, does it, does it matter if it's four twenty-four or five four?
I think four twenty-four until there's a definite decision on whether there's going to be work during the vacation week or not. That's why I think four twenty-four makes sense.
Right, we can certainly make another motion.
Yeah, that can be a separate motion after you discuss the vacation, but just for the pay now, it's through four twenty-four, so that's four more weeks. I think that, that's cut and clean. That's why that date. As far as the germs.
It did include monitors and crossguards, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, it does. They're getting paid now. They'll continue to get paid.
Thank you so much.
There's a, there's actually a memo with the whole list of all the people getting paid. I don't have that in front of me, but it's the people that have been getting paid the last few weeks will continue it on.
Okay.
And three, the three days, is that, is that, is that accurate? That the, are you, are you aware if that's accurate? Because that, that's what I was told. I was, I believe, I, I'm pretty, you know, I usually believe what I'm told and sometimes it's not right, so.
Okay, does anyone here have the expertise to answer that question? Mr. Dowd, you look like you have an answer.
If you, official answer from the city's perspective, you need to talk to Bobby Bagley and Justin Cates. They will make the determination as to what is and isn't proper for the cleaning.
Okay, so if administration can continue to talk to public health, that would be great. I know, Dr. Mosley, you've been having regular communication with them, like, a lot. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. The motion is to move to continue to pay all regularly scheduled workers until April twenty-fourth. So I believe we're ready to vote on the motion. Mr. Guarino, we do need to do this by roll because we can't see everybody's hands go up.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean? Ms. Dean?
He's saying yes, but we can't hear you, Ms. Dean.
It says I'm unmuted by the host.
Okay, got it. What's your vote?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Did we lose Ms. Timmons?
Muted.
Oh, you're muted, Ms. Timmons.
I think she said yes.
Yep. Oh, there you go.
Oh.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you all. Okay, the next item is an update regarding remote learning. Mr., no, Dr. Mosley, do you have a Chromebook update for us?
I do, I do. You know, part of, I'll start and then I, we have Greg Rodriguez, our director of technology here to, to talk, to give you more in-depth details if needed. I just wanted to thank again Greg and his team for really taking this on. Dan Donovan will talk a little bit about the insurance. I think that, you know, we're, we're making the best we can do under the circumstances. And at this point, I'll just turn it over to Greg. Greg?
Hey, how's everybody doing tonight?
We're not going to answer you.
I know.
Go right ahead.
Pleasant trees. So the numbers keep increasing by the day in terms of Chromebooks. Right now we're at around seventeen hundred. Just the need is out there, families who have children, multiple, uh, uh, multiple kids in the family who just need Chromebooks, so to actually get this remote learning going and sustained. So the, the students are working with the school, school principals, and they are handing out, you know, Chromebooks as needed. We had the largest days last week were Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They, they started slowing down Thursday and Friday and even slower today. It's, I mean, it's a good thing. You, you know, we have the Chromebooks for those families in need and I'm happy we do. And just a huge thanks to the building staff for being, you know, so great about working with families and working with technologies. It's really been a joint effort in, in, in supplying these students with the Chromebooks.
So just kind of, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was hoping someone-
A little bit, some, I, I like to just point out some, some of the, the concerns we have is how do we ensure them? Greg, can you talk a little bit about the process of hi- having the kids sign out? What is the, the criteria for it? Also, too, I want to make the board very, very clear that we did not give every single student a Chromebook. Uh, we gave families Chromebooks, which is just different, so I just want to clear up that perception. And then Dan, if you just want to chime in and talk a little bit about the insurance piece.
Yep, so we don't have the luxury of being a one-to-one district just because, one, we're so large and we only have, I mean, I say only seven thousand Chromebooks, but we only have seven thousand Chromebooks. So we tried to base it off of families in need of devices. So if a family already had, you know, multiple laptops, multiple Chromebooks or iPads in the house, we, we encouraged them not, you know, to take a Chromebook because it would, it, it could possibly take it out of the hands of a family who really needed Chromebooks. Also, in a, in an effort with Comcast, the week that we were, you know, standing up remote learning, that was, yeah, there was a lot of communication between Comcast and I, and then funneling it through Stacy, Stacy Hines, to communicate that out to the families. And even Bob Chopra's office as well for the, the families who don't speak English as a, as their first language, so. And so we, we only really wanted, and we left that discretion up to the principals to distribute those Chromebooks to families in need. It wasn't, like I said, it wasn't, and everybody gets one who wants one. And the insurance part, Dan, I believe you can talk about that, just because you, you were in contact with the city, but.
Okay, insurance, we did get quotes for insurance. They were somewhat expensive. So I worked with the risk manager at the city. We agreed not to purchase the insurance. The city does have a self-insurance policy and it will work with us if some of these Chromebooks never find their way back home or if they do and they're seriously damaged. So that's the agreement. The cost of the insurance are, I think around twelve or thirteen hundred, was over thirty thousand dollars, so. We decided to, working with the risk management, not pay for the insurance and we'll see how it ends up working out.
Yeah, so I'll just go back to the sign-out process. I, I, I forgot to cover that. It was, there, the Chromebooks are marked a certain way. So we know what is, what we have for inventory and what went out, so the, the parents were the ones who were signing out the Chromebooks and not the students. So we, we know what Chromebooks are out at the moment.
Mr. Rodriguez, could you tell us, I see you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Dean, could you tell us what, is there a contract? What was the process so that parents understood that this was a loan to be returned at the end of remote learning?
So there was a, at each table, there was a loan agreement posted on there, so they were supposed to read the loan, like, you know, you understand that this is school property. Do not use it for, you know, illegal, nefarious uses, whatever. And then they sign, they, they print their name and then they sign it on the sign-out sheet. So, and that sheet was then populated in, into computer form and then sent to technology.
Okay, Ms. Dean and then Ms. Johnson, please.
I have quick questions. How much do the Chromebooks cost? And if we have seven thousand and we have eleven thousand students, how many do we think we need? Are we saying that, that the best scenario would be that we have one per student or do we, what is, what we feel is the maximum need?
Uh, we, well, only seventeen hundred at this day have been signed out, so not every student needs a Chromebook. And we're not, we, we didn't want to give a Chromebook out per student because we just don't have the, we don't, we don't have the amount of devices to support that. We're not a one-to-one district, like some smaller districts around us, so we just don't have that luxury to do that and.
And.
Yeah, so the-
And that, but how many do you think we need? If we were at our best position, what's, what's best practice to have if you have a, a, a population of eleven thousand? How many do you, we have seven thousand? Is that what I heard you say?
We have seven thousand Chromebooks and over eleven hundred and thirty, eleven, eleven thousand students.
Yeah, and how much does Chromebooks cost?
Depending, the more you buy, the cheaper they are, so around with license, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty for the device and then you have to purchase a twenty-four dollar license, so it's two hundred and four dollars to enroll, to purchase and enroll a Chromebook for educational use.
And we think seven thousand is adequate then? We, we don't need more? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, if we were ever going to go one-to-one, then yes, we would definitely- Yeah, I don't, I, I, if we were ever going to go one-to-one, um, then yes, we would definitely need more Chromebooks. Um, and then we'd have to rethink of how we purchase it. And do we ask families to pay a technology fee or whatever to cover, to supplement some of that cost? But, um, that's what I've done when, working in another district. Um, but right, uh, right now, I don't think we have the ability to go one-to-one or the funds to do that.
But you think seven thousand is enough? You're not saying that we need more? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I can't make that, that decision either way right now because it's something that we haven't, we, this is, this is what we currently have as inventory right now. And seventeen were lent out as a result of, of, uh, the remote learning.
I was asking that because I've been led to believe that we needed more. And so that, that's why I'm asking. So thank you for your help.
Yep.
Mr. Rodriguez, um, I was under the impression that the, um, district was looking at a review of our technology to create a new technology plan. Um, that, that was kind of a planned thing to do, um, and then COVID-19 happened. So, um, can we expect something from, um, IT, I don't know, eventually? Um, with an idea of what the district's technology plan is and, and what we'll need to do as far as purchasing technology to meet it?
Yep. I think before this, we had a good idea of what technology was going to look like. Um, and now that we've, we are able to stand up remote learning, um, that changes things. And I think that we definitely need a reevaluation of how we, uh, of how we use technology, not only as, as, as workers or employees, but as students. So, um, how do we, how do we get there? So I think that's a question that definitely needs to be asked and, and not only asked, but analyzed, uh, by technology, curriculum, special education, ELL, um, all the departments. Because it's not just a technology thing. This technology, as I've found out more and more, has really impacted this entire district during these past two and a half.
All right, please bring that back to the board, um, at some point in the future, because I know that's something we're all asking about.
Right, yep.
Okay, so going back to the question list, uh, Ms. Johnson was next, and then I see Mr. Guarino's hand.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Odin's too, after.
Uh, Dr. Mosley, I was reviewing your handout that was given to us regarding how everything went this past week. And it says here that a number of the students and the parents picked up, um, their Chromebooks. But a number of them, um, never logged in on today. So are we keeping a tally on when they picked it up and if they're logging in or not? Because if students and parents aren't going to be using these Chromebooks, then they should be in their hands at this point in time. Because the Chromebooks are there for them to get on the remote learning, not for them just to store it and, and use it for whatever they want to use it. Because we also got an email from a parent that was talking about, uh, she has a junior in school. And between working with the junior and doing the work, what she's doing with him, she doesn't have the computer to use for her other students. So I mean, if people are picking them up and other people need them, I'd rather see putting in their hands of the parents that want to sit down and work with their kids. And how are we, um, really monitoring, um, the kids and the parents who are working with them, uh, these students? Because I don't want them to come back at the end of the year or next year and the kids aren't prepared. And here's the opportunity. So I'd appreciate if I can get an answer on that. And I just want to say, Mrs. Zim, you brought up a very good point here, you know, with the technology. You know, eleven thousand, seven thousand Chromebooks, then what do we, what do we need? And I think it's time really, to really think about where was learning going in this country now? If there's ever another pandemic or catastrophe that happens. So.
Dr. Mosley, can I just clarify something too?
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, the devices that are, that are going home, um, we, we are able to, um, filter them, especially for content. So no, uh, they, in theory, they shouldn't be able to look at, um, you know, gambling websites, violent websites or anything like that, that, that is labeled in that way. So, and if we find out that a Chromebook is, is not being used, um, you know, we have the ability to, to lock that Chromebook if needed. So it's just, just, so we have that ability to do those things remotely.
I think, I, just to clarify, I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chair?
No, go right ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I think what Ms. Johnson is saying, and if I can hear you correctly, is that we're giving Chromebooks out and people are not even using them. And if they're not going to use them, then let's give them or allocate them to people who are going to use them. And how are we tracking that? Is that correct, Ms. Johnson?
Exactly, exactly.
So a couple of things that, um, part of what we're doing is that we have to do that outreach. And so we're working through that. Um, and what I'll do after this is done is go back and, um, review our protocols and systems. Typically, what we'd like to do is have the teacher reach out, uh, the, the principal reach out and just have, engage the parent. This is where Yeti gets ca, get called into because we are anticipating some language barrier, barriers as well. So it could be a variety of reasons. Um, what I am also going to do, and what we just have to do is, yep, we have to say things a hundred times for people to hear us sometimes. And it could be that they're having difficulty connecting online and not finding the Wi-Fi, even though we said it a hundred times. So certainly, if that's the case, first thing we want to do is troubleshoot before we take or we, uh, take, take the Chromebook away. So we'll do, we'll, we'll, I'll get back to you on the troubleshooting, what we've, we've done. And certainly we're monitoring those Chromebooks that, that are currently out there.
Thank you. But I just want, because when you hear some other families that could use one, an ex, you know, an extra computer, and today you can't ask people to buy anything because nobody has a job right now. It's just silly that if people are not going to use them, then we might as well make sure people who are going to use is, um, it's going to work for them. Um, okay, and then I'll ask my other questions of some other issues after. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I had a little technical problem there. Uh, Mr. Guarino?
I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to mention that, um, in our budget committee meetings, at our budget committee meetings, we have the presentation from IT and they talked about Chromebooks. And, um, so, so the members of the board could look, if you still have that information, go back and look at it. Because even though we have seven thousand Chromebooks, some are becoming obsolete and they have to be replaced. So there's a, there's kind of a schedule that we have on that. So not all of those seven thousand Chromebooks, from what I understand, if I'm not, you know, if, you can correct me if I'm not right, but some are not, they're not all equal. Some are going to become obsolete and have to be replaced. And, um, at some, some point, and I think the schedule was given to us, uh, on the presentation, if my memory serves me correctly.
Correct, that is September twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
September twenty twenty-one.
What's that? That's.
That's, that's, that's for the, uh, the, when the large group of Chromebooks that will become, uh, uh, the auto expiration date will, will start.
Right, right. So, so I know some members were talking about need, you know, do we need Chromebooks? And we do, because we, some of them have to be replaced as they become obsolete. So I just wanted to make that point so the members understood that. And, and the numbers were given to us, I believe, in, in our budget, uh, information.
Yep, and I, I'm going to ask that we, um, kind of avoid, like, getting off track and talking about budget and talking about next year, because I'd like to really focus on what we're doing now and for the next couple of weeks. Uh, Ms. Odin?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Dr. Mosley, we were mandated by the state to, uh, implement remote learning. Are they taking any responsibility for replacing any of these Chromebooks that we could, uh, not get back in good working condition or not get back?
There are a variety of concerns that have been voiced around just remote learning in general. I'm glad you brought it up, Ms. Odin. Um, basically what I thought would be helpful to the board, to the, to the, um, district and for the union. Um, and I know some board members have also reached out and said, can we generate some letter, uh, and also a list of concerns? So the answer to your question, and I said it, you know, publicly, yes, there is a financial cost to this rem, remote learning. And partly what I thought would be helpful, I think we're going to talk about a little later, is just having one general correspondence coming from the district, coming from, um, us, the collective us, just around those concerns. And so, um, we, we should have a discussion around when in doubt, because it's a state mandate, that we, um, make that clear that this had a financial implication. We're still getting the, the tally as, as we work through this.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, so, oh, go ahead, Ms. Zim.
You mentioned that the pandemic plan that some of the states have, I just, I, I mean, it maybe not be something we want to spend a lot of time on, but I think we ought to put that as something we should look into too, right? I mean, it sounded like a good thing that these other states had done it and we didn't. So at some point, when we have more time and less hot issues on the plate, we might want to come back to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
In regards to Ms. Dean's comment just now, I agree with her. I think a lot of these things, um, I mean, how we could improve, do it better, be prepared for something like this again. Because, you know, once you close once, it makes it easier to close a second time. I think, um, we should definitely consider a post-mortem af, wrap-up after we get back to this. And I think that maybe is something for a special committee. Um, I don't know if, any, if we, something worth discussing now or if this is something that should be tabled until later.
I think it's a great idea. It's like an autopsy of, of, of what happened and how we can improve, sure.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree with that. So I think we should put that as a topic on an upcoming agenda. Um, go ahead, Ms. Odin.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, but, uh, a post-mortem would be good. But I think there are things that we have to look at now rather than waiting. What I'm hearing, uh, some of the emails I got, that parents are, are saying their kids are stressed out. They're working, you know, five, six hours a day. They have a couple of kids and, and one device. It's creating a lot of stress. And when I saw the guidelines, uh, that I hope will be published on the website from, uh, the educational groups in the state, uh, their recommendations are, uh, not six hours a day. The most they have is three hours a day for high school students. It starts with preschool, uh, I think is, uh, fifteen minutes. Kindergarten and first grade is thirty minutes. And I think we have to look at that. There's a reason why, uh, they're trying to limit some of the screen time. And, uh, I, I think we have to let our teachers reevaluate, listening to the feedback, so that they can adjust. This is something that we rolled out, that we had no control over. We, we, our teachers are doing a phenomenal amount of work. I had, we had one teacher write to us, they were spending twelve hours a day. I had a teacher tell me, an elementary teacher, they're spending ten hours a day. We, we need to make this more comfortable for our teachers and for our students. It's not a matter of time. I think in, uh, the guidelines, there was a statement, a little quote, less is more. And I think we have to be real cautious of what we're giving our students. So I would, I would hope that we would reevaluate what we're doing while we're going on, because I think we can improve what we're doing. Thanks.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Odin. Ms. Brown had her hand up, and then Ms. Johnson.
So I think you're correct in, um, making sure that teachers, Ms. Odin, are constantly evaluating the process they're using. They're working really very hard right now. Parents have a lot more on their plate to deal with. They're working from home. They're putting food on the table. They have other things going on. But I think if we were to, and if, I think it's a good thing to have mandate or not, I think it's a good thing to have guidelines. But I think if we were to try to put a mandate or a policy in order right now, I think it's so premature because there's no research. And I can speak truthfully from my own experience last week. Monday and Tuesday, I have a middle schooler and an elementary schooler and a husband who is, um, a first responder. So he's going out of the house every day. Um, I, day one was for my elementary schooler all week long. She was really easygoing. The emotional side of things was harder for her than anything else. And, um, what she was craving was that connection with her teacher. And her teacher and all the teachers are doing an amazing job trying to facilitate that. So thank you, teachers. I think the middle schoolers, because they're different even in the high school situation. High schools on block scheduling, they only have four classes a day. So, um, unless you're on a, um, AP course track, in which case your workload probably will naturally be more. You're really only getting, you're getting far less work, but you're also troubleshooting this extra piece that is, uh, of remote learning. The middle schoolers are the ones that I think are getting bogged down and overwhelmed with homework because they've got seven courses a day. But I can actually, this is direct from my own experience. Monday and Tuesday were, my kids worked, my, my kid worked seven hours in front of a computer and she worked straight through and she worked hard. By Wednesday, the teachers saw that. They were already facilitating things differently. They were modifying their lesson plans. Wednesday, it was down to five hours. Thursday, it was down to what I consider a good, perfect workload. And Friday, it was pretty light because she finished all the things to the work. I think the teachers are modifying on the fly. I, that's why I think if we want to put out a guideline, that's fine. But I think that having a policy or a mandate is, would be vermissed because it takes power away from the teachers. And the only way to police it is basically to have parents tattling on teachers. And I don't think we want that kind of a war going on right now.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I wasn't suggesting a mandate or a policy, but I think the guidelines that the state, that these officials in the state who work in education, I think they had some valuable, uh, information in all of the, uh, five issues that they mentioned. And I think it's worthwhile for all the people, uh, whether it's parents, students, teachers. I think it is, uh, I thought it was a worthwhile, uh, document. Thank you.
Thank you both. Those are both, I, I think you both have thought quite a bit about this issue, um, as have all of our, our staff and our families. Um, and I hope that we continue to evaluate. Um, Ms. Johnson had a comment and Ms. Zim?
Thank you. I know over the weekend, we all got some emails from teachers. And one of the teachers at the middle school actually asked their students to, uh, make a list of, um, what they felt, um, what issues that they had. And I'll tell you, it was very interesting to read all this. And I think we could learn from what some of these students are saying, that, you know, math, they, they're having a hard time with math. Um, they think the struggle with remote learning is that having to be on the computer for so long. And I'm wondering, are we, you know, if they're on the computer, how long are they on it for? We giving them breaks, you know, like in school? Um, so I know I'm on the computer a lot now at home, which I'm never on the computer. I'm one of these people who never sit down for a moment and now I'm sitting and it's too much for me. And I think, I'm hoping maybe in the next week or so, we might be able to send a survey, if we're not thinking about it, to the parents and to the teachers to see how they feel at this point in time. If it's going more smoothly, what do they see some of their concerns might be yet? Hopefully, we will have worked out all these kinks by then. But this was really interesting. So I'm sure all of my board, fellow board members probably read this. I don't know if you read it, Dr. Mosley, or not. Um, but, um, I think it was an eye-opener because I don't have childrens in the system anymore. So I'm not seeing what parents are seeing on the computer and the stress level these students might have. So I'm like a person in the background, have to go by what I'm reading and hearing from you, Dr. Mosley, from the administration, from students, from, from parents. And that's almost like a good thing because we're on the outside looking in and we can compile this with really no emotion, you know, that my kids, we're looking at it from a different point of view. Um, also, it was said to me, and I just want to know, that I guess for the, um, elementary school kids, that some of the teachers are, they're going out and checking on where the bunnies are in the, in the area. They're driving by. Is that true? Because somebody said something to my husband. I said, what? That they're having, that they're going out there and, um, counting how many bunnies or something are in a window of school.
Like real bunnies?
No.
Ms. Brown looks like she has some information.
Yeah, um, so it's actually a kind of a fun thing that, um, anybody in the community, that you could be part of it too. So, um, you just stick a teddy bear in your window.
Okay.
So parents, families, shut-ins, whoever, even grown-up, you drive around the neighborhoods and see how many teddy bears that you can find.
Oh.
It's the bear hunt. The, the, the National Public Library put something out about, there's a book going on the bear hunt and you can read it and then do it. Okay, Ms. Uh, uh, okay.
So, so I think that, you know, Dr. Mosley, I don't know if you saw the email that came in, um, from the teacher at Elm Street. Um, I thought it was very. I thought it was very informational, very factual, and, you know, and kind of getting a perspective from the students, the middle school students. And I think this is something we might want to take a look at, work with the teachers, and let them see, you know. So my point is, I think to this, is that, you know, when you're implementing a new program, roll it out slowly and then gradually give them more time into this, so it doesn't kind of smack them in the face on something that they don't have right up front. So I just want to make sure that our students aren't stressed out, and they get the proper learning that they need to get, and the teachers aren't all stressed out in the process of this new learning curve that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Dean? Ms. Dean?
She's on mute. She's on mute.
You're still muted. There we go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not touching anything, so I don't know why I'm getting unmuted. But my, my, my concern is when we will have our next meeting. I, I heard Dr. Mosley saying that he wanted to have a little more time to organize his thinking and analyze the circumstances. But on the other hand, I agree with Mrs. Odin that too much time, there's an awful lot of anxiety. There's a lot, these, some of these kids are really, are really struggling with it. So I wouldn't want it to be too long, but I do understand the need to spend enough time that we do it right and don't have to go back and do it over and over again, because we didn't do it right in the first place. So when will we have our next meeting? And how, if, how do you get, because we're not going to have public meetings, how will these people, the only way they can let us know their positions, I would assume, is by email?
So that's actually an item later on the agenda, so if we can just put a pin in that for right now, and then we'll come back to when we meet again, when we get.
That makes a difference to me, as to how I would, if there, if there were a vote on this, how I would vote, because I, I, you know, but maybe, maybe Dr. Mosley can, I don't know. Maybe you don't think so in point. It seems real in point to me. I don't know.
So, well, we were talking about the Chromebooks, right? And then the next item on the agenda is, what are we going to do about trimester three and quarter four? And we haven't, Dr. Mosley hasn't gotten a chance to say that.
I, I thought it was all remote learning. Okay.
Yeah, we just haven't, he hasn't been able to update us on the other two items. So I'd like to hear that before we talk about when we come back and if we need to, if we ought to make any motions at this time, because he needs to tell us what they're doing first. Does that make sense?
I'll wait. Thank you.
I've got it written down, so I won't forget.
No, it's all right. Thank you.
Everything that people have shared so far, teachers, administrators, even board members, are totally valid and correct. This, there, there are many imperfections rolling this out. Absolutely. There are some positive things, too. We have to understand the circumstances in which we're, we're doing this remote learning. Students are stressed. Parents are stressed. Teachers are stressed. I mean, in addition to our professional responsibilities, we're also coping with the COVID-19, what that feels like, that environment. So we told, I, I can appreciate that. Part of this, too, is that we've only done this just one week. And where, to Ms. Brown's point, is that we're, we're moving along, making adjustments. This is also about time management as well. This is also about like, what I call the brakes and the gas. And so certainly, you know, sitting in front of a computer nine hours straight, that, that's not effective. Taking some breaks and, and coming back to it, asking questions, doing some collaboration online with, with your friends and, and with, with your teachers, totally appropriate. We're still trying to figure that out. And at the same time, not be too rigid to the point where the teachers and the students don't have that flexibility. Just please keep in mind that it looks differently at the elementary school. It looks differently at the, at the second, at the middle school level, and certainly differently at the high school level. Understand, too, that some of our teachers have also been doing different variations of online learning as well. So a couple of things, like, part of what I, when I got the agenda, I also have other administrators who can speak to what the trimesters feel and look like throughout the levels. So Garth and Donna, are you there? Hello?
Nope.
Yes, sir. Definitely here.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the trimesters and semesters, and Donna, if you could jump in there too, please?
Okay, so let's start with Dr. McKinney, and then we'll have Ms. Fitzpatrick, only because Dr. McKinney unmuted first.
Yep.
Thank you. So at the elementary level, the report cards were supposed to go home on March 27th. And I suspended that, given the need to kind of get remote learning up and running. So I think part of deciding on report cards going forward, I would advise the board, making some decisions around April break and the last day of school, because the other thing we're calculating is instructional minutes. There's a calculation that is under ED 306, around number of minutes for elementary, middle, and high school students. The good news is that the commissioner gave us minutes for the planning week. So we're in good shape right now in terms of kind of being on the same page of the last day of school as if we didn't go to remote learning. But certainly, those decisions based on the board, April break and everything else would impact that. I am getting concerns from teachers around, like, how do we assess during remote learning? Is there validity to the assessments? Who's really taking and owning that work? So we have to kind of give some guidance for that. In the end, you know, we have to make decisions around instructional minutes, our contractual obligations, and the budget. We've only incurred about $500 for a webinar to get iReady instructional model, modules available to students during this time, and that's free to us. But we just did a training so that about forty teachers attended to keep that going for a number of students. So as we look ahead to the end of the year, I'm hoping that maybe by the end of the week, I can give some guidance on report cards, assessments, and then really delivery. As you know, at elementary, we usually send them home with the students in the report card envelope, and now we're going to have to reconsider electronic delivery of report cards. So all in all, I just want to thank all the educators, the principals, everyone did an amazing job making this happen the first time in the district. We have UA teachers doing amazing lessons. I've seen a guidance lesson about kids missing their friends, morning messages on YouTube from teachers. They've really stepped up to the challenge with really little to no preparation. So I just want to thank you, the board, for your support, and all the administrators and educators across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Go ahead, Mrs. Patrick.
I just wanted to echo what Dr. McKinney said. My, all of the secondary principals have said how amazing the teachers have been. We had quite a few people that were already comfortable in Google Classroom, and those that weren't reached out to colleagues. They did some webinars, and people are feeling really good about this. I will say, at the middle school, I had to send more than one email out to teachers to say, take a breath, this is not like it is when we're in school, and we don't want to overwhelm the students or the parents. And I think that that may have been part of what Ms. Brown saw as the week went on, because the teachers now are actually virtually doing team meetings. They're talking to each other about what they're giving for assignments. The PLCs have begun, and it's only a week in. I'm just so impressed with the work that folks have done. In addition, the, everybody was very pleased with attendance this first week. They're still working on the absolute data, because we want to make sure that what's the next two and what the teachers have done in terms of the kids logging in matches. So I don't want to give you an actual number, but the principals all said they were very pleased with the number of students that were participating. Some of the things that are still challenges is there are still families reaching out for Chromebooks, and the principals are dealing with that on a case-by-case basis. And there's a few families who, apparently because of where they live, the hotspot is not readily available, and we're trying to deal with that as well. But I, go ahead.
Sorry. Good, nope. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna talk about the quarter change. The high school in particular needs to have fourth quarter happen, because there are seniors that need that fourth quarter class to get the credit they need to graduate. So I, we, I actually had mentioned this the week before, the week the school closed, when we were all still in the office, because Keith and Nate reached out to me and said, we absolutely have to have a fourth quarter. So the suggestion that we have, based on the week the kids weren't in school, is to split the difference and have the last day of the quarter, April 17th, have Monday, April 20th, for teachers to do the transition to the fourth quarter class, and then begin fourth quarter on April 21st. It affects forty classes at each of the high schools, but anybody that has semester or full-year classes, it does not impact. As far as middle school goes, Spanish and algebra, they grade on the high school schedule, but it doesn't change anything for them, because it's a year-long class. In terms of the trimesters, in particular, the UAs have been asking, because they switch pretty regularly. And so now the UAs are at the point where they are, and I applaud them, but they're creating all-new curriculum, and they'd like to be able to switch classes and be able to work with the students with the curriculum that they've developed, that they're familiar with. And so it's basically the UAs that are impacted by that.
Do you have a proposal for what date to end the trimester and begin the new?
The principals today suggested April 6th. In terms of, in terms of report cards, the high schools are ready to electronic report cards, and at the middle school, we've been discussing it since last year. So I think the transition to electronic report cards at the middle school should not be too much of a problem. But I need to talk to them more about it. We have been talking about it for a while, but I want to make sure everybody's comfortable and everybody feels like it's a transition we can make pretty easily.
All right. I see some hands. I see Ms. Odin. I see Ms. Brown. So go ahead, Ms. Odin.
Okay, thank you. I, we did get a question from a parent today about AP testing. Will that occur? And if not, how would a student get credit for the AP course? Did you have any on that?
No, nothing's come out from the college board yet. But when it does, we'll be sure that those AP students know what's going on. But at this point, the college board hasn't made any kind of decision.
Okay, and the other question the, the parent had, are there any updates for the state on the SAT testing?
I, I think there.
No, go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I think there was a very valid question. And before we can give an answer publicly, I would prefer to do some research, and really just like, answering it like this really creates a lot of miscommunication. I, I saw that correspondence come to the board. So what, what I would like to do, if it's okay with you and with Sodom and the board, let's get some research. Let's reach out. Let, let me talk to Lori Cuccio in the guidance, and with the, with the principals, and Donna as well, so we can get that information out to you. I believe, I heard through the grapevine, and I don't, I can't confirm it, they were moving to an online platform for AP because of the circumstances, not just in Nashville, but the entire country. I just want to get that literature memorialized and out to everyone, rather than speculating.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I certainly understand that and appreciate your, your researching this.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mosley. And both of those affect the entire nation. So whatever they decide, it'll affect more than just us. So, Ms. Brown, did you have a question?
I had a question about, if there's been any discussion on how we're going to modify curriculum for UAs like tech ed that are particularly hands-on courses. I mean, phys ed, you can definitely work from home, music, computers, clearly they're doing that every day in modified circumstances. Has there been any way that we might have to modify even the course catalog that children are assigned to, to make sure that they're meeting whatever requirements are, since they're not actually getting able to use the facilities required for those classes?
Actually, that's one of the things that, they're being very creative about what they're doing. And I can speak, because I know there was questions about CTE in particular, but they're doing some pretty inventive stuff with the kids in UAs and the CTE classes that are very much hands-on. As an example, biotechnology is doing labs. Virtually, it's lab simulations. It's called Labster, Virtual Labs. We have teachers that are having kids use things that they have around their house and then showing their, whatever they've made to the teacher. We have students in video production. They were, Avid, which is one of the programs they use. They gave three months free, and it's a very expensive license for the kids to be able to work at home. Teachers are using YouTube videos on how to, asking kids to follow the video for the, you know, to see what they're doing. They're doing video blogging. Kids are, we actually are going to be purchasing VEX for students to construct at home and bring back. There's a lot of things that people have found a way to do virtually, and it's honestly to the tribute of the ingenuity of the teachers.
I think that's the answer, yes?
Yes. I'm sorry I was long-winded.
No, I think it's just, to your, thank you, Donna, to your point, Ms. Brown, that we are, we're adjusting on the, I hate to use the word a fly, but certainly cognizant of, of the things that we need to do to fulfill that requirement. But I, we recognize that it's not hands-on at the school. So we'll keep you posted. I know there's been a couple YouTube videos out there. And certainly, if the board would like, if I can get ahold of them, we'll certainly forward them on to you, and just to give you a flavor of what's going on, if that's helpful.
I think that would be very helpful, and that might be something to include under the COVID-19 portion of the website, just so that people in the community can see some of the creative ways that our teachers have really risen to this challenge. I can't, I'm just overwhelmed constantly by how much work our staff has put into this. Ms. Dean? Wait, Ms. Dean, you're still on mute. Hang on. Okay. Oh, can you start over?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you about the teachers. You can't say enough good about them. But I also think we need to recognize that Dr. Mosley, Mr. McKinney, and Mrs. Fitzpatrick are wonderful. I, I, I admire so much the quiet way that you are attacking, the analytical way, the professional. I think that this has to be very trying for the three of you and for all our administrators as well. So I think we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge how much we appreciate them as well. Thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. And so, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I think you answered the question that I had for the next item, which was the plan for the hands-on CTE and lab-based classes. So if no one else has any questions regarding that topic, I think the next, oh, go ahead, Ms. Odin.
And I, I just had a question. Maybe this is the wrong place to ask it, but how are we handling? I know you wrote us, and you said there are some, some families that are refusing remote learning. How are we handling unexcused absences?
I think that we have students that have logged in. It's still fluid, to be honest with you. Kids that log in, we record them as apps, as, as present. You know, we're still trying to work out the details on attendance, like what is attendance? Attendance in the virtual world is very different than attendance in the physical world. You can have kids that start an assignment at 8:00 a.m., but then walk away for a half hour and come back at 4:00 p.m., and they keep working on it. And I, you know, to Ms. Johnson's point around just looking from the outside, if you have point around just looking from the outside, if you have high school kids, they actually work on the assignments literally all night, and that's, you know, from 12:00 AM to 4:00 PM and, and, for 4:00 AM, and it, it, it's, it's pretty fluid. So partly for this first week, we're fairly lenient on the attendance piece. I, again, I'd like to have a discussion with Garth and Donna and, and Marsha Bagley and Rob Choper, and the principals and the directors on what we qualify for attendance and not. I heard some encouraging news this morning that in terms of students logging in and attendance, it was a 94% at the south of kids who logged in, and honestly, if I could just be candid with the board, as much as this remote learning has its pitfalls, there are some good things. If we can get kids two to three hours focused on something covert, rather than covert 19, that's a good thing. It's, it, it can be doom and gloom when you talk about covert 19, it can be doom and gloom when you're going outside and you're shopping and you're trying to do everything. So the fact that the kids can, you know, be a little bit engaged with our, no, I hope a lot, excuse me, with our, with our teachers and administrators and, and just take their mind off of that two to three hours, I, I think it's, it's, it's a good thing. There are some challenges to the attendance piece, we have not worked out the, the final details of that, it's one of the many to-do lists, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. And I will be very honest with the board, we've had kids that don't want to do it, and that's okay, you know, I mean, we try to engage them, we try to reach out to them, we've called their parents, we say, hey, you know, getting exercise is nice, but let's devote some time to some, some academics. So we're still working out those fine details, and certainly, you know, we're, we've just done it officially six, six days, if you want to count today as one of the days.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Zim, I'm sorry, Ms. Odin and then Ms.-
I had, I had a couple more from a parent.
Oh, and Ms. Johnson as well, okay.
Who will have access to the data with the remote learning? Is there any data sharing with this?
Can you turn the light? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't, I, did you, who has access to the data?
Data.
Um, data, like, like, we still maintain the data.
Okay, so all teachers or administrators, is that people within the district?
What kind of data are you talking about, Ms. Odin?
I don't know, this is what a parent asked, who will have access to the data?
May I clarify? I think I have an idea what they're talking about. I think they're trying to specify, and this might be a question for Greg, how are we protecting kids' privacy on the internet and their long-term data and how that's available, just their internet footprint?
Yep, so we still follow the regulations of HB 1612. Also, we, we, we do content filter in all the Chromebooks at the home. We can't do much about the, the, the family-owned devices, but the desktops, I mean, the, the Chromebooks that we supply are content-filtered, so we have to meet specific compliance with that, so those are, those are the guidelines we have to meet.
So if a student had, chose to use a school Chromebook instead of a Chromebook that they had at home that was unprotected with our firewalls and protective software in general, would, could a parent assume that there, they would be, have the same privacy that they would have at the school using a school computer?
You mean comparing a student-owned, a student-owned device versus a, a district-owned device?
Correct.
Um, that, we only can control what we have in, in, in terms of what we have for devices, so we can't control what, what families do with their own, with their own devices.
So would that be a way that a family that maybe is nervous about their child's internet privacy, maybe they could reach out to the district, they get a district computer, because it would be the same amount of privacy as they'd have on any school computer anywhere else?
Well, we, we, we make sure that when we, that when people are using applications, that they don't hand, the, the applications and the website that they visit aren't handing out personal identifiable information, so, so their digital footprint would be limited. So that's, that's a state law, that, and also it's FERPA as well, so that they need to follow for the applications they use.
So just to clarify, when students are using their own devices and they're accessing Google Classroom, their data is still protected or not protected?
Well, so there are two different things, there are two different Googles, there's a Google personal use and then there's a Google for Education, which is the one that we, that we use, so that is protected use, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Google for Education does not sell any information, but Google for Personal Use does, so like our regular Janelle account do sell personal information.
Okay, but our students are using the Google Classroom application, which is different than the regular Google.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, did that answer your question, Ms. Odin?
I hope it answered, it was my question, it was a parent, and I, I asked them to watch tonight to see if their question was answered.
All right, so if they have further questions, they can email, and then we'll port it along to the appropriate person. And then I have Ms. Zim with her hand up, then Ms. Johnson, and then I don't know if we need to circle back to Ms. Brown or not. So, okay, so Ms. Zim.
My question was, do we need to make a motion on the April 6th date that Ms. Fitzpatrick gave us? Can you hear me?
I can, and I don't know the answer to that question, because it's a, hmm, it's an internal kind of thing. Would we need a, the question is, would, do we need to make a motion to say that the quarter, that the trimester ends on April 6th and the new trimester begins thereafter? Or is that something that the district just can do on their own without a motion of the board? Does anyone have any insight into that? While, while there's a whole bunch of silence, Ms. Johnson?
Okay, if that's an internal thing, that we never make a decision on that before, why would we make a decision on it now?
That's, that's my thought as well, but I wanted to reach out.
I wouldn't make a decision, I mean, that's administrative decision, that's, it doesn't fall in our, in our laps here. I wouldn't make a decision. And since I have the floor right now, I want to know, Dr. Mosley, what's going to happen to students that never log in and don't participate on this in the remote learning?
It's a good question. I think we have to take it on a case-by-case basis. I'd rather say that, well, if that, we, we're going to try, I say try the best we can, to, to get some clarity on to why those kids are, are not logging in. If it's a question of, and we do have some kids who are not computing, families too, who are not computer savvy, so if we have to make a modification, for example, print documents or, or have some type of physical document that, that they can complete and then take a picture and, and send it back to us, we'll, we'll try to do it. But we, we, it's, I like to stay positive and say that that's, the intent is to not have that, but we also have to be prepared for that, and so, you know, I'll have to review it on a case-by-case basis and come up with, with a, a plan on that, but it's a good one.
Yeah, we have to be realistic about it, and then, and I know, I'm sure you maybe answered that mother's question about the unexcused absences with, with that.
I, I didn't answer it, but I did see it.
So I guess the, the question there is, some families are electing not to participate in remote learning, or electing to create their own daily schedule, and that maybe it isn't, we're, we're not going to touch all seven middle school subjects today, maybe they're going to do half of them today and half of them tomorrow, because that's what works for their shared computer space or their, you know, particular family situation.
There was some background to that, that there's, there was some discussion at the building level with that particular parent. Part of what I would hope that, before it comes to, before the board, that there would be some conversations with the teachers and the principals, and it would stay at that level so that there's clarity and understanding. I, I think that there's been some, you know, correspondence as we headed, head to this board meeting around some, some concerns, and all of them valid, no, no doubt about it, and some of them I don't have the answers to. But also too, I, I, I think it's important that the principals also hear this too for the first time, because it, it gives them an opportunity to say, you know what, Donna, this isn't working, or Garth, I've heard concerns about this from, from this, from this parent group, and then they can make adjustments on the fly as well. So I totally understand parents' concerns, it's new, t, uh, teachers' concerns, you know, I've, I've, they've, they've been parents who sent things to the mayor's office as well, and the mayor's office has forwarded it to me as well, so I, I totally get it. It's, and understand, and I just want to clear this, clarify it for the public, we didn't mandate this, this came from the state, this is, we inherited this, and we're just trying to do the best we can under inheriting this directive.
So I just wanted to make sure, Dr. Mosley and Ms. Raymond, that things don't come to us, if they don't have to come to us at this point, that we kind of work everything out with the parents and the students, so everybody's comfortable and we can get, hopefully this will be as smooth as it can be. Right, we didn't ask for this, it got mandated by the state, we're behind on a lot of our own work that we need to do. I've been having people complain to me, where's your budget? I said, well-
Yeah, yeah.
We've got something right now, the budget doesn't have to go through to July. I said, right now, we've got to make sure that our students are in school and learning. We've got mandates from the state, so you have to put things in perspective and prioritize everything, and so I just, like I said, I'd rather not have to have the board step into any of this, because I have confidence that you and the administration can clear this up and get this going, you know, there's bumps in the road, like we all know there's going to be, but I figure within another week, week and a half, then all of this hopefully will be a smooth, a smooth sailing as it can be. We've got to stay positive with this right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, I couldn't agree with you more. And so for those parents out there who have these kind of situations where they're individually uncomfortable, Dr. Mosley, is it your advice that they go to the classroom teacher and then to the principal?
Either way, either or, and what we did last week, and Stacy, if you're there, I think Stacy's here, is that we deliberately made several postings right before this was rolled out, we made the recommendation for, for parents to reach out to the teacher first, but we recognized that parents are working and things are just difficult. We also published a list of all of the principal email accounts there, as well as their contact, in event that they, I just wanted to contact them directly. It just gives them two pointed contacts, and honestly, they're on the ground, they can answer those questions immediately and quickly, faster than I can in some cases, because of just, you know, the teachers and the principals are monitoring, monitoring and grading and getting back to these assignments, so that would be the best course of action. And, and, you know, just bear with us, and I agree with all of everyone here, this is this new territory that we sailed on, and to use Marsha Bagley's, you know, analogy, and Marsha's there, we're building an airplane, we're still flying, so.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, I forgot to ask, as far as special ed, I read a lot, I know that, that's the beast all in itself, but I'm concerned, you know, special ed, what's happening with the transportation, the schools, you know, are they, how is it being worked out with special ed? Are we still paying for schools? Are we still paying for busing? If the students are here and they can't go, you know, where they're supposed to be?
Well, I think, I, I, Marsha, Marsha Bag, Marsha, you're there, I can see you.
I am here.
Oh, so Marsha and Dan, I'll, I'll, I'm smiling, I'm just taking away.
So first, I just want to say that I am very proud of the work that all of my admin team and all of the special educators and related services providers have done in Nashua. We've worked really hard to try and ensure that we continue to provide FAP to all of our students, and FAP is the free and appropriate public education that is mandated. I just saw-
I saw that, I saw someone jump in the background, that's why I'm laughing.
Yes, I apologize, everyone, it's, I'm in my dining room, my family's trying really hard to give me space, but, you know, have kids, things happen.
So along those, along those lines, I just, I want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. It's been a, a huge undertaking, because there are so many things to figure out, not just for regular ed students, but then for our special ed students. So, Ms. Johnson, in terms of your question, I think you're referring to our out-of-district students.
Yes.
So, our out-of, in Massachusetts, when they closed, they had the directive that they did not have to continue to provide FAP, and that has since changed. That came on Thursday afternoon, they, the Department of Ed in Massachusetts changed that directive, so now they do have to provide FAP. So we've been working with the out-of-district schools to provide us, we've asked them to provide us with their plans for the service, the continuation of services they plan to provide our students, and then depending on the responses as we collect them, if, if we feel that it's still appropriate, given what we know about the students and the students' abilities, then we may take action to request, request amendments to the contract, but at this point, we are collecting that information from the out-of-district schools. And our students who are residential, they are still receiving education as, as they did the week before we closed.
Okay.
Ms. Brown?
Is there any concern for the health and safety of a student that would have to get bussed across state lines into a health, like a pandemic hotspot?
We are not providing transportation, so the, the out-of-district schools are also, they're all closed. The residential portions of the schools remain open, and educational staff is going into the residential facility, provide those services in the residential school.
Thank you.
Anyone else on special ed? I don't see any hands, so that moves us to the update.
There's one more hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
At our previous board meeting, thank you, sorry, you'd asked maybe support from the board at the state level for us to reach, to ask for some ended, is that something that you still are seeking the board's assistance on?
Okay, Ms. Brown, you're breaking up significantly.
Connections?
Ms. Brown? Are you still there? Oh dear, I think we might have lost her.
She froze out.
Yeah, she did, she was asking about talking to the state regarding their, the, the legal requirements for delivering special ed services, but I missed-
Go ahead and go to somebody else, my internet just cut out.
Ooh, there she is, and now she's gone again.
Sorry.
Oh wait, you're back.
Sorry, I was just going to say you can go to somebody else, it seems like my internet's cutting out.
Okay.
So along the lines of the, the state timelines, I think is what she was asking about.
I think so too.
OSAP, who is our federal office of special education and programming, is not being lenient with the timelines, they've pretty much said they will not be. However, we are in the district following the CDC and Office of Civil Rights guidelines to say no face-to-face evaluations at this time due to the health concerns, so we have at least alleviated that issue, that we're not following, that we're not going to be completing face-to-face evaluations. We also are not going to be bringing any students into our buildings for any services, as has been recommended by the Department of Ed, due to the fact that it's also a very significant health issue if we were to bring students in. And it's also, it points out that those students have special education requirements versus their regular education peers. We are continuing to have meetings virtually, we've done them via Zoom, we also have conference call options, we use Google to meet, so we do continue to meet the deadlines that way. All of our staff, who are very dedicated to ensuring they're making all of those deadlines, are really working hard to make sure that they are still staying within the timeframes, but we also understand, and parents have been very understanding about what's happening now and the difficulties that we're facing with making sure that we're meeting all of our guidelines. But we are, we're working on getting all of the meetings that were missed during that closure week rescheduled, and we are continuing to hold meetings as we would, except in a new platform.
Marsha, could you talk a little bit about your work with Steve Bennett and just kind of getting a list together of some concerns?
Sure, so we work with Wadley Star and Peters, it's the attorney's office in Manchester, Steve Bennett is the attorney that works with us directly, and he and I are developing a list of pitfalls that we're going to be facing because of this closure, not just us in special ed, but 504 and ELL students as well, but we're working on developing, basically saying, you know, these are the areas that we're going to struggle with, and that we will, until we're able to meet students face-to-face again, these are our areas that we are going to fall out of compliance- students face to face. Again, these are our areas that we are going to fall out of compliance in or that will be losing revenue sources or funding for. And these are, you know, these are some of our, our significant struggles that we're going to be facing. While we try and ensure equity for all of our students.
You talking a little bit about the charter school too?
Sure. So our students who are in charter schools who require special education services, we need to continue to provide those services. So we've been working with the two charter schools that are ones in Nashville and one's right over the border into Merrimack to ensure that those students have access to our Google Classroom account. So that has been a bigger undertaking than we would have imagined because those students don't necessarily have our responsible user guidelines signed. So tracking those down and then determining if they need equipment or a device and then figuring out how to get a device to them has been a challenge, but getting them all into Google Classrooms has also been, we've been working on that last weekend and well, today's only Monday, so today too.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. This isn't the same Steve Bennett who used to work for the city, is it?
It is.
Oh, okay. I've known him for years, you know, he knows special ed very well. I just wanna, and I don't need an answer right now. It can be email to us. I just want to know what's happening with the cost of the busing for special ed and also in the district here where we're not using any busing. So that doesn't have to be answered right now. I'm sure Mr. Donovan is going to take a little bit to give us some information on that. Thank you.
One more thing I just want to add is that once this emergency is over, we're gonna need to have a plan devised to ensure that we have have meetings for all 2,500 of our students, that we move forward with all the testing that we're missing and that we have discussions with all of the families about the services that may have been missed during this time. So this, right now, it's a big undertaking, but once we go back to school, it's going to be an even bigger undertaking for all of our staff as well. So I just want people to keep that in mind that unfortunately, when the emergency is over, it's not going to be back to normal for special ed.
And and once, just to kind of piggyback what Marsha said, once we're done with Steve Bennett, I'd like to forward it to the board. Just the correspondence and just to get any commentary or feedback that you see fit in terms of concerns or any questions as well. That's fair enough.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so Ms. Brown is back. Welcome back, Ms. Brown. So the next item on the agenda is regarding the update on COVID-19. The Nashua South Emergency Hospital. We already talked about the cleaning and disinfecting of schools quite a lot earlier, so I don't think we need to go back to that. And then an update on the lunch program. So, Dr. Mosley, could you tell us what's going on in the south?
I I'll defer over to Dan and Sean Smith isn't here, but I I think this is a very important discussion. So Dan, if you just want to tell the board a little bit about what's happened over there. Some of the, the, unfortunately, we're, we're dealing with COVID-19, but also some of the work and the activities over there, if you will, please. Daniel?
Okay, the South High School, the rotunda, which is the entrance facing the highway and the two large gyms and the bathrooms near there, that corner of the building has been sort of taken over. Or it's called an alternative care site. The intent for this site is if the hospitals get overloaded, patients that are coming off ventilators, patients that are getting better in the hospitals will be moved to this site. So this isn't going to be a site where the very sick are, but where the formerly sick getting better will be placed. This has been been working on this for about a week and a half now with the National Guard and the state. And it's in pretty good shape right now. There's some electrical work that needs to be done, which is the one significant expense. We did receive information late today that the the mayor and the governor had spoken and that those costs for the electrical work would be covered. So that's sort of a quick update on, on the high school.
I'd also like to add that, you know, God forbid, but if this COVID-19 gets too much or starts to spread, that they are looking at other facilities within the city as well. So we should, we need to be prepared for that. The other thing I thought would be helpful for the board for our next meeting, I'd like to invite Bobby Bagley to our meeting to just give us a kind of a general update on on how the health services in the city are working. I I think she's great. I think she's done some wonderful work. I think she's been coordinating with the schools, the state, the federal government, the National Guard. And I just think having her here, just maybe at the beginning of the meeting, just devoting maybe five or 10 minutes for her to give you an overview on some things that are taking place in the city and how they all intersect. And then you can fire away on questions. I think it'd be helpful. And it really puts the, this emergency site into a better context. I know we had a healthy agenda today, but certainly for our next meeting, I think it'd be helpful to have her join us with her administrative team to give us an update if that's something that the will of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I've seen a lot of nodding, so I think the board also agrees. Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what a proactive thing I think it was to to turn over the high school and to look ahead far enough and not to be reactive. My son, who lives here with two small children, was a little concerned thinking that it, it was kind of a scary thing. But I assured him that I felt like the city and the state was being very proactive and making sure they had a plan before things got to the point that they are and where my other child lives in New York City. So I wanted to thank everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. And and really best wishes for good health for your child in the city. That's that's very stressful. Okay. Did anyone have any other questions regarding the south or cleaning disinfecting of the schools? I think we covered that. Ms. Timmons? Oh, you're muted still, Ms. Timmons. Oh, there you go.
Okay, I just have one question. Is the school being utilized now or it's just laid in dormant? Until we need it?
It's not being utilized right now. It's, it's being, it's set up, but it's not, there's no, no patients there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And so regarding the lunch program, I know that there have been quite a few changes over the last week. Gigantic thank you to everybody working on that and the United Way and 68 Hours of Hunger. So I'm not sure, Dr. Mosley, are you giving us the update on where it stands now?
I I I'm not actually. Dan can can give you some update.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Okay. All right. Food Service has been doing a tremendous job. Dahlia Dagel, who's the director, has, and her crew have done a great job. But basically, they are providing breakfast and lunch for, they're preparing breakfast and lunch at seven schools. And they're they're also preparing some at a satellite and and there's four other locations. So basically, there's 11 of the 17 schools where you could go as a parent or a child to pick up, pick up a lunch. The first week, they did it daily. Last week, they did it Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so you could take two lunches.
Okay.
To give you an example of some of the numbers, in the first week, we gave out 5,098 breakfast and lunches. Last week, we gave out 7,877 breakfasts and lunches. And also this week, we've added bus routes where we've taken a one of the blue city buses and they run a route. There's one that went today. There are three more that will be going on Wednesday. So that's something that the United Way reached out and said there are pockets of the city where people are having a hard time getting to the schools. We sort of bring the lunches to them. So our food service staff is preparing lunches. The volunteers come and pick them up and they put them on the buses and then they deliver them to the, to the various locations. I think, excuse me, each bus route has about four or five different stops.
Oh. I am blown away.
Any questions on that?
So does anybody have any questions or comments? Ms. Seem and then Ms. Bishop?
I guess my question would be, do we have any expense in that? That number is staggering, almost 8,000. And I have to think that has to be expensive. Is is that going to cut our budget?
Come on, Mrs. Seem. I wouldn't spend money we don't have. No. Actually, that will be covered by the
Good answer.
Government.
Thank you.
All lunches will, we will be reimbursed for.
Thank you. That's good news.
And Ms. Bishop, did you have a comment as well? She's shaking her head no, so I'm going to take that as a no. Ms. Timmons?
Oh, you're muted, Gloria. You're muted.
Oh, there you go. Now we can hear you. So start over.
Okay, I was wondering if we still have enough volunteers?
Yeah, the United Way is, is in charge of the volunteers and we haven't heard, had any complaints from them that they're running out, but if we do, we'll let everyone know. But I think at this point, the volunteers are are still there.
And if people in the community wanted to volunteer or help out, the United Way has a sign up through their website. Oh, Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And he, he couldn't, he sounded like they were doing a wonderful job. It was very impressive. But the whole thing is impressive. 8,000, that, that number is so staggering. I'm still, my head is still swimming. Can you imagine making that many sandwiches and that many breakfasts? Unreal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Seem. And thank you to everybody who, I, I I am personally blown away by the way that the community has really come together. This lunch program is, it's the school district, but it's also the United Way and it's volunteers and it's 68 Hours of Hunger. And now it's the city with the blue buses. So we're fairly urban for New Hampshire and you know, we have a lot of need and I just, I love that people are coming together to make sure that our kids have their basic needs met during this time. So thank you to everybody. So moving on, the next item on the agenda is discussing whether or not we are going to have the April 27th to May 1st spring recess or not. Is that correct, Dr. Mosley?
Correct. So I know there's been some discussion around this. Part of what I was thinking, just making the recommendation to the board and the board can have a discussion about this. We've heard different things in emails. I was thinking that perhaps maybe creating a survey for, for our, for our teachers and then sending that out and getting that feedback and that would give us a better sense of what's out there. That's just my suggestion, but certainly, you know, there's there are districts who have decided that they wanted to work through the April break and and then end school five days earlier. There are some schools who have honored it and basically said there's not going to be any communication online or mailing, so to speak, during the April break. So I just wanted to throw that out to the board and, you know, perhaps give you some data to, to think about. It's very similar to what we did my first year here around the last day of school and 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 getting some feedback on that. So for discussion.
I'm on mute. Okay, Ms. Bishop, then Ms. Seem?
So my two cents on the April vacation, and this is coming from my house and kind of the, the other families that I'm friends with is if we don't, if we do do April vacation and people aren't home and parents aren't home, at least when the kids are doing their schoolwork, there's some structure. I worry that the kids being home this long and a whole week of having nothing to do is going to decrease motivation and is going to I don't know, I think it just might stunt something. So if we kind of keep this momentum going, if we interrupt it, we may have a hard time getting kids back on track. But that's just my two cents. I like structure and routine, so I always for that.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Seem?
I think I would like to agree with Dr. Mosley in that this is a lose-lose for us. No matter how you vote, half the population is going to be mad at you. So from my perspective, if this gives them the deciding factor and they have to be mad at each other and not us, I'm taking the coward's way out on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. I like it. Pass the buck. Ms. Brown and then Ms. Odin?
See, I'm going to pass Ms. Odin for a minute.
Ms. Odin?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say, I think when we had the snow day issue and I thought, oh, good, we won't have that this year. And now we have a bigger problem. We involve the parents in the survey. Do I remember correctly, Dr. Mosley?
And Yes.
In all fairness to our community, I, I think we ought to try to get a survey for parents so that they feel they have, had, had been asked how they feel about this because they, in a lot of ways, are see their own special needs, what they have, what their work schedule and whatever. But I think we, we ought to, in all fairness, involve the parent in this survey.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Odin. And now back to Ms. Brown. And then Ms. Johnson after. Ms. Brown, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. So I tend to think that that we shouldn't wait until the last minute to make this decision. I think we are elected. We have a job to do. I think we have a pretty good perspective on what's going to be best for the students of the city. This is a unique situation where it's not like the teachers have been working really hard through this whole time. The first week was difficult for teachers, parents, students, they're trying to alter, the teachers are trying to work to alter their curriculum. Parents are maybe working their job from home and trying to put food on the table and help their kids. Students are learning a new thing and they at least had structure in their day, their week before. They'd go in, they had a schedule, they'd get to do that. So essentially, what we've created now by bringing everybody home and putting us all in this huge transition period at once is a whole city of trauma families. And we talk regularly about how the families in trauma situations are have a difficult time when we leave school and those few days before winter vacation when they know they're going to be gone for several days. And then how long it takes them, it might take them a week to get back on schedule after we've transitioned back into school after winter vacation. So I think that this, we are moving in the right direction with the remote learning. I think we're finally starting to get some legs. We're getting some momentum. We're moving. If we talk about doing this for the next three or four weeks, it's just going to get better and better and have teachers improve and the students improve and get used to it. And then all of a sudden, we're going to pull the rug out from everybody on April vacation. And they'll be home for a week. They won't have anything to do. The families that would have been, maybe had the finances to go on vacation, they won't be. I fear that we're actually going to crank up again the kids that are like, well, or the families that think, we've been quarantined for a month, so it'll be fine for us to set up a playdate, playdate now. There, they, we might actually be facilitating people to break the social distancing rules by not finding some way to engage them in some way each day. And my kids, and I think everybody's kids, are getting so much gratification out of reaching out and seeing people on screens. It is not the same. You will never replace a real classroom teacher, a real human body. That is not what this is. This is triage. But I think if you all of a sudden take that week off and pull that out from under them, I think it's going to be pretty devastating for a lot of people. And I'd like to make a motion now to go ahead and cancel April vacation.
So we have a motion on the floor um to cancel April vacation and go straight through. Is that correct? Seconded by Ms. Johnson.
And can I, can I speak on her motion?
Um, yes, I think Ms. Brown just spoke on her motion, and then I think Ms. Timmons will be next.
Um, can I, I was supposed to be next, I think.
No, a- after you, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Johnson, you speak, and then Ms. Timmons. I just wanted to acknowledge that I saw her hand.
Okay. I just wanna say that uh Ms. Brown is a hundred percent right. I mean, we're gonna break the cycle here. We've got everybody moving into the right areas. They're, they're beginning to sit down. They've, they've got a routine going. And the trade-off is they're gonna get out of school, hopefully five days earlier after everything, and that might be the biggest reward at the end of the tunnel here because of all the grueling schedules that they've had right now. This is a lot for everybody to undertake. Like I said, I don't have a family. I don't have kids in the house. But I can only imagine what it would have been like with my three kids, trying to get all of them on the computer and get them taught. So I think that the the routines here, and let's keep the momentum going because I think come June, when the weather's warm, everybody's gonna be happier and you can't go anyplace. You can't go on vacation. You can't travel anyplace. So I agree with Ms. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Timmons, and then Ms. Bishop.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Brown have a really good point. However, I think if we get that survey out quick and let a buy-in with the parents and the teachers, I think we have a better response. And one way or the other, I'm okay with it. But I think the survey would be a better way to go at this particular time. And if Dr. Mosley could say, if he can get the survey out, we still, it's just the beginning of April. We haven't even got to April first yet. So if we can just get a survey out to get some buy-in from the teachers, from the um, the parents, and then we make, we come back within another week, I think that would be a lot better. At least they have a say instead of us just voting to pull them out of school a week. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons, Ms. Bishop, and then Ms. Gilio.
Yeah, I one hundred percent agree with you, Jess. Um, but I do think that engaging the teachers and the the parents in what's best, what they think, at least we can have a wider base of knowledge about what is working well in other families. Um, they may be ready for a break. Other families may be ready for a break where our kids are kind of coasting along. But I think getting that input is gonna be important.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Gilio?
Hi, um, I had anticipated that we would be asked to vote on this tonight. So thinking as an educator, um, I, and based on what I've heard from people in the community, I would have voted in favor of eliminating April vacation, but we're not talking about a vacation that starts next week or the week after, and so I think there's time to do a survey and I think it would be much better to let the teachers and the parents um give their, give their, you know, we don't have to leave the survey open for a really long period of time. And I assume we're gonna be meeting sometime in the next week or so or, you know, so that we'd have plenty of time to vote on it. Um, cause I I agree, it's a good thing, but it may not be good for our, for our children, for our teachers and for our students. So I think asking them is really wise. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Mr. Guarino, did I see your hand? No, okay. Um, I do uh, I do have a question and then um uh, Alderman Dowd, you can go ahead and then I'll ask my question. You're on mute, Mr. Dowd. There you go.
I had to unmute it. Uh, whenever your motion is made, I would just add to the motion that you continue to pay people to the end of that same date, so you're not doing two motions and two discussions. You can get it all done in one. Doesn't have to be now. We wanna go and ask the teachers. You probably have a better foundation uh for making the decision, so up to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Uh, Ms. Brown?
Oh, Mr. Dowd actually brought up the second part of why I think this motion should be talked about right now, and I think it's a good reason to vote on it. We can actually alleviate the need to discuss paying people during April vacation. I realize that during traditional circumstances, um, the food service workers and the paras may not be expecting pay during that week anyway, so some people have been justifying not canceling the week because, or not canceling April vacation because um those people would not normally be getting work. However, a lot of those folks also go get side work during those particular times. They might be working part-time. They might be working um in a childcare situation, something like that, that they don't normally work on. So if we're not gonna pay, we're, it's gonna cost us more if we choose to pay those people during April vacation that are not usually on our salary or they will be suspended from a week of pay. If that, does that make sense? If we can, if we use our current model, we're paying people who would normally be getting paid right now. And then we don't cancel April vacation, those people will go for a week without pay. If we cancel it, they will have pay until the end of the school year. Cause right now, they can't go out and get their side work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, so my question, and I don't see any other hands, my question um is regarding how this affects our end of the school year. Have we gotten any guidance from the state um saying that we can do this? Because I know in the past, we've talked about like, let's get rid of February vacation, or let's do this, or let's do that. Um, and the answer has always been, no, you can't not have February vacation, because that's the one that we've always, that comes up in conversation a lot. Um, so is there any guidance from the state regarding um, are there, are there requirements that we have this vacation? And then if we do eliminate it, um, is there any guidance from the state that we would then be allowed to have that week to to get done on June twelfth instead of the nineteenth? Cause I, I don't wanna take a vote and then um have to go to the nineteenth and not have money for that week. So, uh, does anyone know? Dr. Mosley, you're on mute.
Madam President?
Oh, Dr. McKinney has something as well.
Um. That goes back to the calculation of instructional hours. So if we're gonna have school, then we'd have to recalculate the last day of school. If we're not, we're still on schedule of getting out of school around the week of um, June fifteenth. Now, some of the dates may change. Um, but that's the main piece from the state of calculating our hours. Um, and I would just respectively ask the board to provide consideration for administrators and the educators. We've been working tirelessly over the last two weeks and uh would appreciate the time off. I think it's great that we're all learning new technological skills and keeping connected, but I think getting unplugged and getting away from the work has been a challenge. As one principal put it, um, they could either um see or hear the the tears or the uh upset nature of teachers behind their emails, trying to make remote learning work. And I think we're all trying to balance a lot right now. Um, so maybe if we're given two weeks, we could come back to the board with a recommendation around April break, both with um, the instructional minutes breakdown, um, feedback from faculty and administrators and provide a recommendation. Thank you.
What the survey would allow and what this, what it would also allow us to get that calculation, but also get some feedback from the faculty and um from the uh teachers as well. Um, I don't, I don't like to say I've heard or anything, I just don't know. But I also think that it's important to get that that direct feedback. Personally speaking, I think that there's some mixed emotions about this. Um, I think, I think we're in new territory here. I mean, you know, what is calculating the number of hours in a remote environment like this? I think we're in new territory. I I think it's important to have a discussion and to broach it here at the board level because there are other communities who are who are doing this. And so I, you know, rather than having the gossip or just having it out there, I think it warrants a public discussion and and see what happens. I I don't, I don't, I I don't have a uh, uh, either way, however people would like to vote.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mosley. I have Ms. Bishop and then Ms. Brown.
So my phone just blew up with a bunch of teachers, paras and parents, paras and teachers that were all like, no, give us our April vacation. Don't take it away. So just doing all of that, that my phone just blew up.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, Ms. Brown?
And my phone just blew up the other way from three teachers and four parents that say, uh, no survey, survey, you guys have the right to make the decision. And um, and they all are saying, yes, keep the momentum, because the kids need us. Um, and here is the issue. If we wait around on this and we drag our feet, that's exactly the response we're gonna get. We're gonna get fifty percent of the people or forty-seven percent of the people saying, this is the worst idea ever. Then you're gonna get fifty percent of the people saying this. And then there's gonna be a Facebook blow-up of people manipulating our our gut instincts. I think that this board has been elected for a reason. I think we're the right board for this job at this time in history. I think we